Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the that's okay, Pickens County Board of County Commissioners Work Session on Tuesday, August 19th. Hope everybody is well. And we are starting off our afternoon session of the work session talking about our homelessness strategic plan update. I know many of us have been looking forward to, and thank you for the great report. I'll turn it over to Sha'Carra or Lindsay, which
I'll kick us off.
Great.
Everyone, Lindsay May Meish, oh, that was my maiden name, sorry. That was weird. Lindsay May Meish is my full name. Director of Human Services, Pickens County. Thanks, everyone, for having us today. This is gonna be our first it's our first check-in on the completion and initial findings. We've come to you once before. That was really to explain how we were gonna go through this work, and now we're at the end where we have some initial findings, and we're gonna start socializing you all to these findings and looking towards what our next steps should be, and looking for your direction in some of those things. I'm gonna set us up by just doing a little bit of context setting and reminding you all of how I came into this work and how we got to this place today. So if you may recall, a few of you probably recall, we back in 2018, I believe, we kicked off the Pickens County Housing Stability Coalition. And this was made up of electeds and faith organizations, community leaders, people with lived experience. It really brought everyone together. And we started just talking about what currently existed in Pickens County, which was the homeless shelter and in the day center services, and what we needed to do to look at this at homelessness as a problem that could be solved. So this coalition came together in 2018. In 2019, we developed a strategic plan. And that strategic plan had some short and long-term goals attached to it, which in retrospect now, looking back, it's funny to look at those goals. As a person who came into this work with the human services lens, because we had things in there like rapidly rehouse people, which we didn't even know at the time had a HUD definition attached to it. We just thought we understood kind of what rapid rehousing meant, but there's actually quite a bit more to that. So we started to also uncover the level of expertise that we didn't have going into this space. But I think one of the things that human services really brings into these these types of discussions is our ability to convene and be trusted partners in Pickens County to have some of these discussions. So that was great, and we were kind of moving with that strategic plan, and then COVID hit. And in COVID, there was this interesting, there were some interesting events that happened, which if you recall around non-congregate shelter, we weren't allowed to be putting people in congregate shelter based on the public health rules and some of those other things. So we started to look to the state and to other partners about what we could do to manage some of these issues now that we could no longer have a shelter. So we started with some non-congregate shelter concepts. There was funding coming from the state. We applied for something called the Emergency Solutions Grant and ended up, I think, ultimately bringing in almost a million dollars to start creating the infrastructure for programs and services, because what we had before this was really a homeless shelter that was functioning not within any sort of state system, wasn't receiving any funding through that as a mechanism. It was really just a local, this was a localized funded concept. And then COVID really pushed us into understanding what some of the state regs are around how we serve folks that are unsheltered and what are some of the pathways to do that. Human services applied for those grants, and then we, because we had some of the internal infrastructure to hold some of that risk with those programs, we eventually RFP'd that out, and Recovery Resources has taken on the lion's share of providing homeless services, programs and services. That program has now expanded, what they have done with it, from that kind of little bit of funding that we got initially. We now have an infrastructure to track data in a way that we never did. We now have street outreach workers, which is a HUD term that we didn't know before. We have navigators there running an emergency winter shelter. They continue to do that. It really has grown quite a bit, and we felt like we had reached a point with the current way it was set up that I no longer had the expertise, the county no longer had the expertise to take it to the next step. And the next step was really looking at like development, infrastructure, how programs and services then interface with those things as well. And from the human services end, like statutorily, we're required to do child welfare, adult protection, and economic assistance. So you put me in the world of homeless services, and it's a very new world that I have very little expertise in. At that time, we also started getting kind of an insurgence, I guess, of ARPA, yeah, influx of ARPA funding and LATFA funding. I'm not going to even try to say what that is. But that we really felt like since we had reached the limit for our expertise around this work, and we had really built something really good, we needed to take it to that next level. So I'll hand it over to Ashley, because that's part of the Housing Department and some of what the work that they've done to bring this forward.
Great. Thanks, Lindsay. Good afternoon. I'm Ashley Pearl, Housing and Resiliency Director for Pickens County. And it's been great to kind of float some of this between human services and Lindsay and my team and housing. But that's exactly what it's been, is floating. So we're really happy to have the SHG team onboard. So kind of to pick up where Lindsay left off, in 2024, we did see across the region, we also saw a big change in kind of what our homelessness population looked like. So in the past, we were really accustomed to chronically homeless folks. We thought the number hovered between 20 and 30 folks who were kind of always in an unhoused situation, not really in and out. And then I think, Francie, you know firsthand, we had a lot of newcomers come in. We had Venezuelan refugees and some other folks that showed up primarily in Carbonell in Garfield County, but that was a big signal to us in Pickens County that if something like that, of that order of magnitude, kind of showed up in Pickens County, we were ill-equipped to address, not just a different type of population that has very different needs than a chronically homeless population, but those numbers. And so that was a big clue, in addition to knowing, we didn't have the expertise in-house anyway to care for the population we have. And then if we were to see a huge new influx of folks, we would be kind of underwater pretty quickly with expertise and capacity. So we met with this board and asked you all to approve some funding, this was prior to the property tax passing, to support bringing on a consultant to help us really bring that expertise in-house. You all approved that, and we went out to RFP and selected SHG, and I'll let them introduce themselves. And then shortly after that, the Affordable and Workforce Housing Property Tax passed. And thanks to you all, one of the bullet points in the ballot language speaks directly to the allowable use of that money on services for homelessness, not in the project services and capital expenditures. So you wrote it quite broad, that we can use that housing property tax to support this work in a variety of different ways. So since we've had that, we've used that money to support the SHG contract. And when we're thinking about future years, we budgeted out some money to just some placeholders to kind of try and make some space for that in that property tax, and you'll see that during budget season. But today, we're at the very beginning. These folks have met with so many people in our community. They have such great data. Their scope included first, an initial assessment of what's going on. What's the data tell us? What do the people who are living this tell us? What do our partners say? Kind of an initial environmental assessment, and then kind of an analysis of what the challenges are. Why haven't we been able to overcome some of these sticky problems? And then eventually, some recommendations and some very detailed program plans. So what we will get to today is those initial observations, kind of what are the really sticky challenges? In future meetings, we will bring you the recommendations, and we'd love to hear from the board what you're most interested in hearing more about. And eventually, we'll be bringing you very detailed program plans for implementation that include budgets and staffing and timelines and all of that. But today, we're just at the beginning. Our hope with our time with SHG today is to just kind of give us all the background, the lay of the land, what's changed since we last had a real good environmental scan of this landscape, and have a good conversation with the board of kind of what key things stick out to you. We don't have any key questions for the board today, except what's an aha moment? What's a light bulb? What would you like to hear more about in future meetings? We anticipate this is the first of many meetings that we'll have with the board on this topic. So undoubtedly, we will not answer all questions today, but that's why we know kind of this is the start, and we know we'll be back. It's been a pleasure working with SHG, so I'll let you all take it on, but it's great to have expertise in the room.
Questions about landscape and level setting right now? Hi.
Hi. Good afternoon, County Commissioners, and it's great to be back with all of you again. It's been a while since we've been here. So I'm not gonna spend a lot of time with introductions, but just quickly, I'm Summer Gathercole. I'm the Managing Director of SHG Advisors, where a firm that's been around for over 11 years now. I admittedly took a leave of absence from consulting in order to lead Governor Polis's behavioral health reform efforts. So I have a lot of the kind of systemic expertise around how do we coordinate all these different pieces, regardless of what system we're talking about. So that's a little bit of the background that I bring. I'm gonna let my colleague Cassie briefly introduce herself, and then our colleague Dan, who is with us virtually today.
Hi, folks. Cassie Westmoreland. Like Summer said, I've been working in the world of housing for about 10 years now across Colorado. I was actually at the Division of Housing when you all started getting money from the Division of Housing. So I've been really intimately connected with Pickens since you all started coming to the state. So it's really great to be in this side of things. I've been working with Summer for about a year and a half now on all the housing work that she's been doing. So happy to answer any specific questions, but I think we might wanna just go ahead and jump in. Do you wanna let Dan introduce himself?
Yeah. Dan, go for it.
Sure. Hey, everyone, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. Hi, everyone. So my name is Dan Tregley. I'm a professor at Rutgers at the Center for State Health Policy, and I've been doing work focused on housing instability and homelessness and health for the better part of 20 years now at state and local and federal levels, as well as on the academic side of things.
Great. Thanks, Dan. So we're gonna jump right into things. As Ashley and Lindsay shared, we have a lot of data, which is one of the reasons why we sent the background report out, because there is so much data. I also think that that speaks to the partners that you have across the county, the level of engagement. We've been really fortunate to, just across the board, have lots of suggestions, data, background. A few things I just wanna kind of remind all of you is that when we talk about people who are experiencing homelessness, we use a really broad definition. So we're talking about people who are chronically homeless, who I think are a lot of what people kind of perceive homeless population to be, those people who are perhaps living on the street or living outside. But our definition of homelessness goes much more beyond that. So it's people who are living with friends, who are couch surfing, who are living in their cars. And you'll hear more about this throughout the data that we talk about today, but certainly, one of the things that we found here in Pickens County is a lot of people who are experiencing homelessness here are people who are part of your workforce. So they're here, they're working, they wanna contribute, they wanna live here, and the affordability makes it really challenging. So I think that does set Pickens County apart a bit from some of the other kind of, you know, other communities that I think we've worked with over the years. But with that, let's just jump right in.
Sure. Yeah. Before we get going, before we even jump into sort of setting the stage, which is just basically repeating what Ashley and Lindsay have already said, this work is very jargony. I've tried to take that out of it, but we just kind of speak that language now. So if we say something that doesn't make sense or an acronym that you don't know, please ask. Of course, it's totally fine. So just to reiterate this, what we're gonna start with is a high-level overview of the background report that you all got. I've heard you're a board that likes to thoroughly read things, so hopefully, this is a little bit of a repeat of what you've already read. But just to reiterate something that Ashley said, this might feel a little bit different than how you've talked about homelessness in the past, because we've got data from many different sources. And so it's a pretty robust look at what homelessness looks like in your county. We have a couple of different options. So again, just to repeat, very high level, we haven't gone into budgets. We haven't gone into staffing capacity. We haven't gone into that sort of stuff yet in this presentation, because it's a lot. We would have to sit here for hours. So we're starting to think about that, but the next step for this is to really come with business plans, basically, of how many staff do you need? How is that, what does that look like at Pickens County capacity, et cetera? So you're not gonna see those details today, but you are gonna see sort of our roadmap for where we think you could go with some of the property tax that you now have. Yeah, that's great. And so, yeah, to reiterate what Lindsay said, we're really just here to hear what it is that you all are interested in. What are the business plans you wanna see? What are the things that are non-starters? What are the things that have to happen immediately? We do have, you know, short and long-term implementations for these different recommendations as well. So again, we're not saying you have to start all of this tomorrow, but we're gonna sort of roll it out in the way that makes sense based on your capacity. So with those sort of precursors, we'll jump into some key takeaways from the background report. Again, this is stuff you have all already seen, but this is basically a snapshot of the last about a year. It's a little, it's from May, so it's a little bit outdated now. But over time, in our HMIS system, which stands for Homelessness Management Information System, which is the federally mandated database for homeless tracking, you all have about 153 people experiencing homelessness in the county. There's a couple of things to notice here. So your number of people and your number of households is the same, which means that you don't have any families in HMIS. They're all single individuals, one-person households, which is pretty significant. You also, as we were talking about earlier, the vast majority of your services right now, people who are being tracked in HMIS are coming from street outreach. So that's those workers who are going out to the street, literally meeting people on the street and trying to get them connected to services. Second to that is your emergency shelter, which just operates in the winter. And then you do have eight prevention slots in the county, which is not nothing, but that's the only housing resource that's tracked in HMIS right now. So big data caveat here. Anything that comes out of HMIS is only gonna have those street outreach and emergency shelter folks. So to Summer's point, that's not gonna capture a lot of that hidden homelessness, the couch surfing, you know, the folks who are bouncing from place to place. But as we look at that HMIS data, what we're seeing is that only 16% of people are exiting to housing. So you've got this cycle where people are coming into contact with services and then going back out into homelessness. We would love for that number to be much higher, because we don't wanna create a churn, right? We're seeing, because it's street outreach and emergency shelter, and because of some of the things that we'll get into in just a minute, there's not an off-ramp essentially for homelessness in the county. Your prevention program, it's doing great. You've got 100% housed. That's awesome. That's three people. So very small sort of percentage of the total population.
I'd like to ask a question of HMIS. Is it customizable?
To an extent, yes. There are federally mandated things that you have to track because of some of the federal dollars that you all receive. But this system is pretty customizable, and the nice thing about HMIS in Colorado is that every homeless provider in Colorado uses the same system. Most states have many different systems, so we can actually track people over time as they move into different areas of the state as well. Is there a specific?
I just wondered. So there are things we could add in here to track that we've not been?
Correct. Yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
It adds a little bit more work, you know, but if there are key data points, it is absolutely customizable.
I would wonder about like families and children and yeah, sorry, Patty. Do we have a seasonality in our numbers?
Generally speaking, yes, but I think that seasonality is gonna be in some of those families and folks who are couch surfing and aren't captured in the HMIS. This data you can think of as your literally homeless population. And so the other kind of tricky thing about this is your emergency shelter, you're only gonna see people there in the winter, because it's only open in the winter. So there is a seasonality, and it's hard to sort of put your finger on it specifically because HMIS is only tracking these very limited things. Street outreach has a little bit of a broader reach, but I mean, it's the same seasonality that you see for your workforce, kind of up in the winter, down in the shoulder season, up in the summer.
How we're tracking whom, because you might think we'd have an increase in the summer because in a decrease in the winter, because people don't wanna be here when it's so cold.
Yeah. And we'll see that, I'm gonna, there we go. So you've got about 47 chronically homeless folks. I'll go back to that other slide in just a second. And I think those are your folks who are here, right? They're here, they're only getting services in Pickens County. They're figuring it out in the winter. And then the other, what, 105 is probably where you see that fluctuation. And that's all anecdotal. I will, like, we haven't seen that in this data, but from talking with folks, that's kind of what we're hearing.
Francie.
So the shelter in Basalt, the people who go in there, they're not counted as homeless since they've left home and they're
What shelter in Basalt?
For, you know, what's it called, resources? Shannon Millers.
Oh, response.
Response.
For domestic violence and sexual assault survivors.
Are those not considered part of the homeless population?
They absolutely are considered part of the homeless population, but domestic violence survivors are actually legally not allowed to be entered into HMIS because it's so open. So they have their own comparable database, basically. But they would still be considered homeless because they're in a shelter.
But they don't show up in these numbers.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, they
They're in a secure base.
Thank you. Yes. Yeah.
Cassie, because it says no families, or, yes, the question is, one could assume there are no families who are experiencing homelessness.
I would say that your families experiencing homelessness are probably couch surfing and living in their cars and doing things that might not have touchpoints. The other thing is that sometimes with street outreach, in HMIS, we build street outreach to be a little more flexible, because there's so many trust barriers there. And so you put less information into it, because you need to get something from people. And so a lot of times, people might not share what their family household makeup is. I would also imagine that a lot of like the newcomer populations who are very intentionally staying out of these systems right now are probably not captured in here. So if you just looked at this, technically, yes, you don't have any families in HMIS, but I think that's a very hidden population.
I can share anecdotally that in child welfare, we have families that are homeless, but our system does not interface with HMIS. So I can anecdotally share that we see that in child welfare. We see families that are homeless that are living out of vans and, right, they're couch surfing. We're hearing about that. And where they get captured is in the Resource Center, Aspen Family Connections, and that's where they get case managed. We're not connecting these systems. I think what we're seeing in HMIS right now is exactly what Cassie is saying. It is the folks that are chronically homeless and those fluctuations, I think, in the seasonality as well of those that are homeless versus, I think, we have so many resources in this community around how we support our families, that they're being captured and case managed through other avenues, not through Recovery Resources right now.
And so the high-level trend that we're seeing with that population is that once folks fall into homelessness, they get stuck there. And so this is actually across the region, so Pickens Eagle and Garfield, but the trend exists. Unless you can really get out of it pretty immediately, you're there for a year or more. There's just not really an off-ramp. There's many, many reasons for that, and we'll go into it, but this is a pretty significant trend that we often don't see outside of candidly rural resort communities, where it's so expensive to house people. So just a few populations to focus on before we get into some more specific recommendations. But about one in three folks experiencing homelessness in Pickens are chronically homeless. It's a little bit higher than the national average, but those numbers are trending up to about 30%. So you're right in line kind of with what the national average is showing, and that's folks who have been homeless for a year and have a reported disability. So it's not just that homelessness. They also have that disability component. About 8% of your population are veterans. That's actually a bit higher than the national average. And again, I think that's probably just because it's so hard to house people. Veterans do have quite a bit of housing resources available from the federal government. They're very hard to be used in places like Pickens, where it's very, very expensive. And then almost half of your homeless population have a self-reported disability. So, and that's mental, physical, behavioral health, all of the above. That's a pretty significant portion of folks. Any questions on the data before we jump into looking at the system response? So I can't remember which one of Ashley and Lindsay said this, sorry, but a couple of things to note about homelessness response in Pickens County. It's really new. So really, you've started getting data, or I'm sorry, you've started getting significant money as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. So we're talking about a system that's five years old, right? Some of these systems in Colorado have been around for 40, 50 years at this point, so it's still a very new system. And again, I forget which one of you said this, I'm sorry. There's really two main service options right now when we look just at homelessness. It's street outreach or winter shelter, emergency shelter in the winter. And the challenge with that is that neither really, neither one of those gets you off the street. You've gotta have a house and the resource to get into housing to get off the street. So that's part of what contributes to people getting stuck, is the services that are available right now aren't connected to getting them out of housing or out of homelessness. And there's limited capacity. We have recovery resources and a lot of really great partners who are contributing to the work in Pickens and across the region. But those nonprofits aren't focused on homelessness often. They're focused on other things that happen to overlap with homelessness. And so they expand their capacity to do things like the emergency shelter and street outreach, but there's not really sort of a leader in this space from the nonprofit sector. Like Lindsay mentioned, there's lots of services, there's lots of behavioral health work, which we found out through the Behavioral Health Report that Summer did. But in terms of focusing on your housing system and your infrastructure, there's not really a clear leader in the region. There we go. And so what ends up happening is we kind of have a system that looks like this picture on the left, where lots of different folks are kind of out and about, doing their own thing, kind of moving however they want. And what could be the case is having a clear guiding strategy, bringing all of those great partners, bringing all of the resources that you do have, and sort of moving them in one direction in a more efficient and sort of like collaborative approach, focused on a specific goal around addressing and ending homelessness. I just like this visual, so I like to include it. So there's a couple of different options for what this guiding strategy could look like. So the first is, and we see this across the nation, and we can go into more detail if you are curious, but the first is just managing homelessness, right? Keeping people alive while they're outside. So that's gonna look like increased police presence, having folks in emergency rooms, increasing your jail capacity, increasing your detox, et cetera. That's by far the most expensive option for a taxpayer, because you're responding to a chronic problem with what are supposed to be one-time intensive services. Emergency services are inherently designed to bring everything to a problem, because there are emergencies, you don't really know what's going on. And when you do this with homelessness, with people who have been homeless for years and years and years and years, it gets really expensive really, really quickly. The next option is to sort of provide emergency shelter, and I would say this is really where Pickens exists right now, right? You're starting to do that emergency shelter, you're going out to find folks, getting them connected to the services. But there's still not an exit ramp. There's not a way to get them back into housing. And so even though this is less expensive, it's still quite expensive, because you're still just responding to the same things over and over again without that off-ramp. And so the response to that would be to provide housing. So what does that look like? There's three real components around what most homeless infrastructure systems have. So the first is housing navigation, literally just helping people find housing and get them connected to options that exist. There's housing subsidies, so covering the gap between what someone can afford and what your actual rents are, which are very high here, I think it's safe to say. And then there's supportive services. So once someone is housed, especially those folks who have And then there's supportive services. So once someone is housed, especially those folks who have more intensive needs, how do you provide them services in their home to make sure they stay housed? Um, and it, while there is an upfront cost, over time, this is the least expensive option because you're getting people off the street in those emergency situations and actually putting them somewhere where they can start to heal, address their issues, et cetera. Um, and so this, oops, is the recommendation that we're going to be talking about. So all of our recommendations are within this housing focus. Go for it.
Thanks. Um, I just want to be a little provocative here because I, you know, I think we've been talking about this for a long time, but not everyone in the community has collectively been talking about this in a long time. And so I think you might get requests to substantiate these statements about what's most expensive and less expensive. Um, you know, I I I'm certain there's a best practice and there's a whole, you know, history of information and experience and case studies to draw that off of, but but kind of ground proofing that here, you know, I could very easily just hear some critics in my head saying, you know, I don't buy it. Like, housing's really expensive to build and deliver here. Is it really that much more expensive for our PACT program to be intervening here? Is it really that much more expensive, you know, for us to um, provide emergency shelter, you know, four months out of the year, as opposed to having case management costs and operational costs year over year over year over year? Um, so anyway, so I just.
Yeah, we can, this is going to sound weird, but I think these folks will understand. That's my favorite thing to do, is that sort of math. So we could absolutely put something like that together based on the data that you're seeing um, with your very specific local services. That being said, and this is a Denver-specific example, but we see this across the state in other places like Salt Lake City. Um, I'm trying to think of, there's, well, there's a few places in the south, but that's a little hard to compare here to there. Um, but generally.
I just think even if some of this is like cost adjusted.
Yeah.
For, like, what would a similar layout look like with our cost adjustment?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that could be, I think, part of what we'll need to do before we spend any taxpayer dollars is that cost benefit analysis, right? And making sure that it actually cash flows. But these are the types of savings that you see when you house folks. And so I don't know if folks are familiar with the social impact bond that happened up in Denver. But basically, they took the thirty to forty of the highest, you know, the impossible to house people who were in jails and in hospital rooms, put them into housing. The 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 police department actually gave housing providers a list of the people that um, they probably no longer wanted to deal with. And they housed those folks. And two years later, these are the savings that we saw across time. Um, so what we can do, and I'm just thinking out loud here, is look at the cost that you've got right now and sort of project that based on some of these cost savings. And like you said, cost adjust it. Uh, but this is for the last probably twenty years or so, they've been testing this. If you all are familiar with permanent supportive housing as a model, um, different types of social impact bonds have been specifically testing that cost benefit analysis. And time and time again, you see it is less expensive, even if you're paying a hundred percent of the housing subsidy and a hundred percent of the services subsidy, it is still much less expensive than some of the other emergency responses. But we can uh, definitely get you a Picken County specific example. And so before we, well, any other questions about that or, because we're going to jump into recommendations? Okay. Um, so just to reiterate, at this point in time, for Picken, it truly is a solvable problem. The forty-seven folks that you have experiencing chronic homelessness, as well as sort of this larger sort of under the, under the water iceberg of family homelessness that we do know exists, it probably feels unattainable. Uh, but it, but it is actually a solvable problem, especially because of some of the property taxes that you all now have the ability to dictate and invest how you see fit. Um, and just to remem- just to say again, um, we're not going to recommend that the property tax is a hundred percent of what solves this issue. That's absolutely not realistic. But looking at how you invest those dollars in programs and leverage other existing sources uh, to make the most of those dollars in terms of a a system that's actually a larger strategic guided guided system. Um, it's, it, it will take a lot of work. I don't want to underplay that, but it's solvable and it's doable in a place like Picken. So, we're going to jump into sort of our high-level recommendations now. Said this again, or said this before, so I won't say it again, but these are just really high levels. We don't have budgets, we don't have staffing capacity, we don't have recommendations about should you do it, should you RFP it. We're thinking about those things. But we want to hear from you all first what these recommendations, what, which of these recommendations are exciting and interesting before we spend the time digging into all of that. So, not going to belabor the point, it's really expensive to live in Picken County, right? There's a supply and demand issue. Um, and you all talk about that every day, I am sure. Um, so our recommendations are looking at this from a supply-demand perspective. So the first significant challenge that your housing cost creates is that the demand for housing creates an artificially high rent. So if you all are familiar with something called fair market rent, it's basically a rent cap that HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, uh, sets. And any subsidy that comes from HUD, even if it comes through the state of Colorado, cannot be used in units that go above fair market rent. So we've got picking fair market rents there and then your actual rents on the right. So even if there were subsidies that could house every single homeless person in Picken County, you literally don't have the units to put those folks in because your rents are so high. Um, there are many other communities that face similar challenges with FMR, but nothing that comes quite as close as Picken. Um, there's some flexibility where you can do what's called a reasonable accommodation uh, to increase that FMR, but the most I've ever seen HUD do is maybe like a twenty, thirty percent increase. That's not going to get as much in a place like Picken County. Um, so that's our first real significant challenge is that that the lack of supply and demand uh, creates. So our first.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
So, those average rents seem, I'm having trouble interpreting that because I don't see the average rent in Carbondale for a three-bedroom is twelve thousand. Is that what that means?
That is what I was able to find online, yes.
From Zillow or AI or something, you said?
A couple of different sources, yeah.
Cause I've looked that up quite a few times recently too. Those do seem a little high for me.
Okay.
But, uh.
Have you seen any at three thousand dollars a month?
What do you think, Ashley, about those numbers?
I think they're high.
I think some of them could be high, but I think I don't think the Aspen ones are high because you're taking the full free market rent. So free market rent and then averaging it, we are seeing. You know, and I do think we will have some more discreet rental information coming in a couple of months from the Housing Needs Assessment, which will also kind of true up what West Mountain Regional Housing brought. However, I do not think that there are rents in any of those places akin to the free market rent. Or fair market rent.
And that, that's a good point. These absolutely include those outliers. You know, the mansions and the, so that is a very important caveat.
And STRs, I think, is influencing this.
Possibly. I mean, we didn't ask, short-term rentals, we didn't ask you to do a huge deep dive. I think we asked you to find, are there any fair market rents available? And you said no.
Yeah.
I can agree with that flat out.
And anecdotally speaking, short-term rentals are absolutely part of that challenge. Yeah.
I would, I mean, if, I'm sort of looking to you, Ashley, I, I think it would be great if the, these could get trued up a little bit. Even with the similarly to how the data we saw from West Mountain, like, once you removed fractional ownership, once you removed certain classes. Just because I really, I want you guys to have the highest degree of credibility on this. And um, and I just, I think if it's, if it's not a huge lift, you know, maybe just cleaning that up a little bit to really be able to say, no, we're talking about the thing that a person who's working here, a homeless here, might aspire to enter to, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think the one-bedroom things are close. But the two and three-bedroom ones just seem out of whack to me.
Okay. Yeah, no, we can definitely incorporate that.
I will also say that the fair market rent set by HUD is higher than APSHA, uh, is lower than APSHA rates.
What is, what was?
The, what the, what HUD considers to be fair market rent is is lower than what, than APSHA rental rates.
That the max.
The max.
Like a category five.
Yeah. Well, even for category three, for like a two-bedroom, it's more than that for APSHA. So you would have to be a category one and maybe a category two, depending on the amount of bedrooms, to be getting fair market rent on an APSHA deed restricted or, you know, subsidized unit.
We can dig more into that and get some more specific data points, though. Absolutely.
And it's interesting what the fair market rent actually means here when it's so far off of what's happening. So I mean, it's hard to figure out what fair market actually means. Does fair market mean thirty percent of the, does it mean thirty percent of the average income?
So what is?
What does it mean?
So take average income out of it, because you have AMI, which is sort of the other side. Fair market rent is basically, what HUD does is they sit down and they look at your census data, they look at income data, they look at inflation data, and it's all very calculated and formulated. And they basically say, okay, based on how much we think it costs to live in your community, this is how much we are willing to pay toward a unit. So yes, there are often income restrictions based on the program. But these amounts actually aren't connected to income at all. They're for any housing subsidy that HUD offers. They, they will not put their dollars into a unit that is above fair market rent, regardless of the person's income, need, et cetera.
So they won't do partial payment. They won't, like, if the rent is five thousand.
Correct.
They won't do twenty seven, twenty-one hundred.
Yeah. Yep.
Have to live in something that is twenty-one hundred.
The other.
Of which there are none.
Correct. The other really tricky thing about that is when you do try to braid local dollars, you have to adhere to the most restrictive requirement from a regulatory perspective. So even if you had very local dollars that we could braid, as soon as you put HUD dollars into it, fair market rent limits what you can do. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I mean, no, but.
Well, and just remember the, you know, the wealth in the community is not captured in it by incomes here.
Right.
Um, which skews that from the beginning, I think.
Well, the other thing to consider, does HUD even exist anymore? Will they have any money tomorrow?
As of right now, today, at whatever time it is, yes.
And so I think this information is important, but I don't think there's a chance in hell that we're going to get subsidized.
I agree with you. And so.
Doesn't mean we don't need to look at the numbers.
Yes. So that is exactly why. Our first recommendation is that one of the first things we should do with some of those property tax dollars is to create a rental subsidy that actually meets needs. So doing exactly kind of what you were talking about of subsidizing the actual rents that we do see. There are many different types of programs, targeted programs, social services, additional supportive services, et cetera. But high level, waiting for the federal government to fix this problem is not going to happen here. And with all due respect to my state colleagues, the state is also limited by a lot of these fair markets. I think Colorado can be a little more flexible because there are a lot of state dollars at the Division of Housing, but they still have restrictions that Picken just different world for Picken. Um, so what, our, our first high-level recommendation is to use some of those dollars to create that local subsidy. Um, focused specifically on folks and households who are literally homeless, um, who face barriers, things like eviction history, criminal justice, domestic violence, et cetera. So folks who are going to have a really hard time getting into a private market unit. And again, once those folks are housed, doing the services while they're in housing to make sure that they're actually able to stay in housing. And that can look like roommate situations, so that it's not one person in a one-bedroom that they're never going to be able to afford. Or connecting people to job placements, or connecting people to social security, or whatever it is, having those services while they're in-house. Uh, many of these programs, to give the definition of rapid rehousing, like Lindsay talked about earlier, uh, have a limit on them. So the federal practice is that it's up to twenty-four months of assistance with the goal that during that twenty-four months, you're working toward that sustainability. Um, and using models like, things like progressive engagement, which are offering the smallest amount of subsidy that somebody needs to maintain stability, so that they don't start to rely on that subsidy that they have us, go ahead.
So in a place like here, where people who make a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars can't afford a place to live, we're talking about people who don't have potential incomes at that level, probably. Trying to become independent after two years is impossible.
That's a great segue to my next slide. If we're okay to move to the next slide.
Staff set us up to do that.
I, I, I love it. I'm here for it. So, yes, that is the demand, but you absolutely also have to look at the supply. And even with the available workforce units that do exist for those folks who are never going to be at a hundred and twenty or whatever local income needs to be, there, there really does need to be a focus on creating affordable units, restricted units for your workforce. And so what we see in the data is that even the existing affordable units are out of reach for some of the folks for a lot of reasons. So first things first, there's that fifteen hundred uh, hour per year work requirement. Aspen Country Inn has reduced that to a thousand. As of right now, I don't think they've gone further down than that.
Aspen what house?
Aspen Country Inn. It's the APSHA.
Yeah, I know, I know, yeah. Thank you.
So they have reduced that because what we're seeing is if you're working those many hours, you often are making more money than the income restrictions. So that forty-eight thousand, that's that category one, you cannot make more than forty-eight thousand for a lot of the Aspen Country Inn units. Your average area median income is about eighty-three thousand. So there is a big gap between what people are making. They're that missing metal, right? They're, they're making too much to afford the low-income units or they are making too little to actually afford private market units. When you add that in with the fact that half of your homeless population has a disability of some kind, which often keeps them from being able to work full-time, you see disparities and what we've seen, we've talked with APSHA a few times now. And they've had about nine open units at Aspen Country Inn for at least two months because of some of those gaps. So, the solution should and needs to be continuing to diversify the supply of affordable housing so that we're not setting people up to fail, right? Um, so there's a couple of different ways that we could go about this. So looking at figuring out how to create waivers for people with disabilities or other workforce challenges um, within reasonable limits, right? We're not saying let's give a free-for-all because, for, you know, insert whatever reason. Um, but the significant presence of folks with disabilities in the homeless population, I think, connects directly to the, the lack of ability to get into affordable units in the region if you're not working full-time. And the other side of that is that there needs to be targeted continued investments of things like tax credits, private activity bonds, and other financing structures to be able to build the units for the workforce population that you all see. Of course, within urban growth boundaries and land use codes and all of those types of things. We're not saying that to just build everywhere, right? Um, but there are some really innovative models. And and one other thing before we get into the innovative models is that we know that this will work in conjunction with the housing impact fee, but we're not suggesting that this be funded by the housing impact fee or touched by that at all. We're really looking at.
You're not talking the housing impact fee, you're talking the mill, I mean, the property tax.
No.
No, she's talking about the impact fee.
We've got a lot of fees out there we want to make. The housing impact fee is pretty, pretty limited.
That's what they're calling out. It's just the Employee Housing Impact Fee, which is collected in community and development for development projects, is restricted to workforce housing only. And so they're just calling out that this would, that that would not be an allowable source for this type of program. But thankfully, the housing property tax is broad enough in its definition that it could cover.
Cover all the other things it needs to cover.
Francie, and then I have a comment.
So you're talking, I think you're talking about um, housing units that would be available for our current homeless population, unhoused population. And so, are we talking, it's my understanding that if you, we have a multifamily complex and we fill it with people who are single and many of them are unemployed and disabled, that it makes an unstable housing situation where it's not balanced with other parts of our population.
Yeah, absolutely. I think this specific piece here, we're going to talk about what we call permanent supportive housing, which would be for the single, unemployed, chronic issues, will probably never be able to maintain stability. That's not the population we're talking about here. What we're talking about here are the people who are working, who want to be in the region to work and who cannot access the available workforce supports that do exist. Does that answer the question?
So we would do that, build that, and then we'd still have forty-seven homeless people?
Correct.
Okay. I'm not quite sure what we've accomplished there, but in terms of homelessness, but that's okay. Not quite sure what we've accomplished there, but in terms of homelessness, but that's okay.
So that, well, and again, that'll get at your, that population that we've been talking about that's not represented in HMIAS. So your families, your folks who are couch surfing, the people that Lindsay sees every day.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I just hadn't realized it was so compartmentalized, but now I understand.
And the one hundred and six of the one fifty-three that are not.
Correct. Yep.
Um, I would, I would just maybe suggest a language amendment here, um. Subsidize the creation of affordable units within urban growth boundaries or the Pickin County Land Use Code. Cause we have provisions in Land Use Code that allow housing and current locations of housing. And I wouldn't wanna preclude.
Easy.
You can be compliant with both, I guess.
Right.
Those who own most of the land within the urban growth boundary. County does not.
Yes, right, exactly. Um, so to get Francie, a couple of the questions that you were asking. We looked at a couple of other resort, resort communities specifically in Colorado who are using Lytech and other sort of financing structures to model what it could look like in addition to what APSHA is doing. Um, so this Alta Verde and Breckenridge is a traditional Lytech, which is low-income housing tax credit unit. Um, they combined a lot of subsidies around climate. And so they're a net zero project, and they were able to subsidize their workforce units without having to require that fifteen hundred hour workforce piece by leveraging in many other, um, subsidies and things like that. This one is gonna be contingent upon what happens at the federal level. I think the state is still very actively invested in climate infrastructure. But just saying that out loud, something like this may or may not be possible in the future. But being able to combine those different subsidies as ways that other expensive areas have been able to do it.
Isn't the Aspen Country Inn Lytech?
It is, yes.
Yeah.
And I think, just to clarify, so the, one of the high-level recommendations that the team is provide, is presenting is that permanent supportive housing, which we will get to. Which would require some sort of either new building or purchase a building, and we will talk about that. This initial recommendation that we're talking about right now, we could start incrementally for the next many years with existing housing units. If we wanted to expand it to get to all hundred and five, we would need additional housing units from what's available now. But there are currently existing housing units that are vacant, that could be tweaked to allow for folks who are, um, at risk of homelessness or kind of in and out of homelessness without kind of, uh, layered-on challenges, who could be put into these units.
So we're talking to people who don't qualify for APSHA.
Who don't qualify for APSHA, who we could make some policy changes and they could qualify for some of these units. And then if the program is really successful, we may be building new units, but that's down the road. I, I just wanted to clarify that you're showing examples of new build units, but that is certainly not the first step by any means. It would be to address the currently vacant units by addressing existing policy to allow folks to live there. But they would not be the same folks that we're talking about later on in the presentation who qualify for permanent supportive housing, who need caseworkers on-site and supportive services on-site.
So I just wanna comment on this a little bit because the situation at Aspen Country Inn is a impediment of our own making.
Mm-hmm.
And our own perpetuation, you know, I mean, Aspen Country Inn is a Lytech property. It does not, it has income qualification requirements. It does not have workforce qualification requirements. We have layered-on workforce qualification requirements for that. So I think there's options about removing those. I think that runs in the face of APSHA's mission. So whether APSHA's mission to provide workforce housing can also accommodate a non-workforce requirement in a housing project is attention.
Community housing.
Yeah, community housing and, which could mean it doesn't need to live under APSHA anymore. Or it could mean APSHA has to expand its mission to include it, you know? But those night, you know, we have unhoused people and we have empty units. And I see it as like purely of our own making and responsibility that that condition exists. Um, and I, as a, as an opportunity for a surmountable problem is my personal opinion on it.
That's right, if you're responding to her, go ahead.
Uh, I, I was just gonna say, I think the way to think about these examples that we're about to go through are ways that Lytech looks in other communities without that additional layer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I mean, I've been planting the seed on this at APSHA for quite a while. And I just sort of bring it up every meeting when we talk about open and available units, that it doesn't have to be this way.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and, you know, whether, whether we buy out the Lytech subsidy or whether we take it out of APSHA, or whether we expand APSHA's mission, I think there's, there's options.
My question is about, um, the proposed housing that's, uh, coming to our community. And I don't know what the, um, I don't know what's happening with the lumberyard in terms of what levels of income, uh, are gonna be, have restricted rents. I don't know how that's planned at the lumberyard. I don't know if you know any of that, Ashley, but it does seem like that's gonna fill. If, if in fact they approach it as a partial solution for everybody in the community, which they might not. But, um, that seems like that would fill some of these gaps. And then some other things that are on the, in the books as well, I would think would, um, I'm hoping will solve some of these problems.
I'm thinking the same thing, Francie. I think right now is the time to have the policy conversation at this table. Because there's a lot coming that you all could influence. So lumberyard is being run by the City of Aspen. They are currently planning to have it be a fifteen hundred work, uh, work hours per year requirement. Um, however, the county is involved and has the potential to get involved in a couple other projects across the county, including some that we have a lot more leverage on than others. And so I think the conversation is, is ripe right now to open up to say it's workforce and community. And your property tax was specifically written to be affordable and workforce housing mill levy. So I think you have some sway, and I think it's a good time to open the conversation for the community to say it's always been workforce, hard and fast fifteen hundred hours. Uh, is it time to open that, that conversation up? Because if we have to have a completely separate bucket of money and a completely separate development initiative and completely separate housing, we won't get there. It, we need to weave it in with what we're currently doing. And there's a lot of opportunity right now. So I think you're asking the right questions and.
Yeah, and I don't think APSHA serves our retired people very well, so.
Yeah. I think the other piece about this is, so this second example is a hotel that was converted in Durango, and we've talked about this a lot. The reason that we're bringing this up now is because these projects aren't easy. That's why that, that a lot of people don't do them. They're very complicated. But when, you know, a hotel like this goes on the market, you have to have a plan already ready. You can't spend the time doing the research and. Do what?
We've been there.
Yeah, right, right.
And raft about it. And houses workers.
Which is great, you know, it's like pieces of the puzzle.
As Glenwood Springs and Garfield County Coles, we couldn't do it there, but raft could.
Yeah. But figuring out what, what it is that we can have in place and, you know, to this conversation, is it APSHA, is it somebody else? But there, the ability to do Lytech is quite complicated. And so there needs to be some entity in the county who can make that project go, frankly.
One of my question that I was, had my hand up for earlier. Um, wasn't Aspen Country Inn a hotel prior? I thought it was. Way back, you guys, probably before you were born and I was on the board. I know the Red Rose across the street was. But I think Aspen Country Inn may have been.
I'm pretty sure it was. I don't even remember it.
And I think we would have been prior to what happened in Durango.
Probably, yeah. Yeah, I think this one's a little bit more of a recent one. And so then the third example that we wanted to show is out in Route County. They actually did a Lytech project that was specifically for families. So no studios and maybe a few one-bedrooms, but primarily two and three bedrooms, which are, again, challenging because you have fewer rents and so it's harder to cash flow. Um, but there are ways to be very creative, and Colorado is a really great state at doing these types of examples. The other thing that I will say, and we don't have the data on this yet because the data is still catching up to what we're seeing in the market, but we're working on a project with Adams County, and what they're telling us is that they actually can't get affordable projects to cash flow right now because there's not as much competition. And so private market units on the front range are actually less expensive right now than some of those rent-capped affordable units. And I just say that to say, that's gonna make affordable units in the next probably three to five years much less competitive. So normally you have to go into the Lytech round a couple of times before your project is selected, cause there's so much demand. And there's only a certain number of Lytechs that Colorado can get, get out a year. I'm gonna guess that in the next few years, there's gonna be a lot fewer applications for Lytech. Don't quote me, or, you can't quote me, we're on public record, but that's what we're starting to see. It's not in the data yet, but in talking with folks who are doing these types of developments, they're seeing vacancy rates that they haven't seen for ten, fifteen years.
And why would that reduce the number of Lytechs? Because there are other opportunities?
You can't get a Lytech project unless you can show that it will cash flow, because you have to have that cash flow to pay off the debt. And so you have to have a vacancy rate of about ninety-five percent consistently to be able to make these types of projects cash flow and be competitive for the Lytech applications. But what we're seeing right now, again, specifically in Adams County, is about a ninety percent vacancy because people are choosing private market because it's the same cost without the restrictions that some of the Lytech units might have.
I see.
Can I, can I ask a question about this? Well, it says while tailoring design to the workforce rather than tourist markets, well, Lytech you can use for tourist markets anyway.
Yeah, and, and so, yes.
Kind of, you can read that, but could you build a tourist market? No, cause.
Sometimes what we'll, what you'll see in Lytech projects is that they'll do portions. They'll like, this number of units is for low-income people, this number of units is for tourists or people who are coming in on short-term visas or whatever, or short-term, not visas, rentals, thank you. Um.
Maybe the same difference.
And, and often what happens is, especially when you're doing family units, because you have a fewer number of units, so you're collecting less income, is you have to subsidize.
Well, but the use of word tourist makes it sound like it's a hotel where you'd book a room for a night to come skiing for them.
We can change that. That's not, that was not.
Was kind of misleading. I'm like, what? You can use it to build a.
The, the, the message there is that you often have to subsidize that type of unit with a more expensive private market. But that isn't, they didn't have to do that in this project, but we'll change the word tourist.
Yeah, clarify it for me and maybe others.
I'm sure many other people have that question. Um, any other thoughts, questions on the Lytech? This is kind of our last slide on this one before we jump into the next recommendation. So anything else on that? So we talked about this a little bit at the beginning. We're seeing folks, once they fall into homelessness, they get stuck in homelessness because there's not an off-ramp. So twelve months or more experiencing homelessness, if they're not really able to get out of it in that first month. And so really what we're proposing to create here is basically a centralized hub where, and this would not just be for, you know, your chronically homeless folks, but anybody that, that Lindsay is seeing in, in her day-to-day work in human services. A centralized place where we're collaborating and bringing all the housing resources into a, either a physical space or an office, like a, in a government office, in some way collaborating all of those resources. And bringing them together so that people who are at risk of losing their housing know where to go before a crisis escalates. And they have access to those resources before a crisis escalates. Um, the biggest things that we see missing, quote-unquote, right now from the system are some of those housing-specific services that we talked about. So figuring out how to bring landlords from the private market into these programs and have units dedicated to local housing needs that are existing. Having a housing case management plan. So again, people whose whole job it is is to keep people in their house. So not, you know, fixing their mental health or making sure that they're not, you know, insert whatever service needs somebody might have, but truly just focused on keeping people housed and figuring out what it is that they need to do that. And then same thing with the housing stability program. Figuring out how to help people self-resolve when that crisis of homelessness comes up. Nationally, we see, uh, about twenty percent of people, if they're offered a short-term intervention, they'll resolve their homelessness on their own without having to fall into a shelter or unhoused situation. But that requires really flexible funding that most federal, all federal dollars will not allow for. So figuring out how to have like a one-time investment in this medical bill or, you know, childcare, whatever that challenge is for people, that helps them self-resolve their homelessness without having to fall further into need, basically. Um, this is a short-term implementation. What I mean by that is we're just talking about more humans and more services. We're not talking about capital. We're not talking about infrastructure. The long-term solution would be some sort of physical space. Um, so inclusive of permanent supportive housing. So again, that's gonna be for those forty-seven chronically homeless folks who are really never gonna be able to maintain housing without some sort of subsidy and support, at least not for the foreseeable future. To be perfectly blunt, the reason that we're recommending combining PSH with a hub and a space for a shelter is because PSH comes with really, really deep subsidies.
What's PSH?
Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, um, those come with really deep building subsidies and operational subsidies that traditional shelter or office spaces don't come with. So in places like Pickin, where it's so expensive to build, leveraging these programs into one building often lowers the local dollars that have to go into it. Did you have a question, Francie? You look like you're gonna.
No, I'm just, so there's, there's housing in there as well as offices.
And a space.
And case management.
Mm-hmm, and a space for a shelter that's not your administrative buildings. Ideally, yes.
It's the only building we have that we.
I mean, I would say, I think this idea has been floated in the community for a number of years with perhaps not quite the technical understanding of what should be requested. And it seems like there's quite a bit of, um, state housing board dollars that go to projects like this, too.
Historically, there has been. We will see what happens with it. Just to be honest, I think, I don't think they're doing any new vouchers right now through the Division of Housing, so that's a challenge. Um, and I think they're still figuring out what the budget shortfall at the state level looks like. That being said, as of, again, right now, two oh six today, there is still really significant investment in PSH at the state. And then there are also, you know, you've got CHAFA who invests in a lot of these types of things. There's, there's capacity in Colorado. We'll see what that looks like in the long term, but, yeah.
But everybody has to apply for it, cause it's mandated. You're mandated to have this, to do this work by the governor, so everybody's gonna be applying for the same dollars.
When you say you're mandated?
Well, there's a big push at the government to build more housing. So if every county needs to build more housing, every county's gonna be applying for these funds.
Yes, and with PHA, PSH specifically, you actually have to show the need. So places like Denver, I mean, they obviously still have need. There's still folks experiencing chronic homelessness. But there's an effort at the state to make sure that PSH is across the state. Um, and the roaring, we're working with West Mountain Regional Health Alliance right now to do the first regional PSH. But that's gonna be eight scattered site units, so a drop in the bucket of the need. Part of what, what they considered when I was there, which was two years ago, is the geographic distribution of the subsidies. So if you're in a region that doesn't have any PSH, you're gonna be more competitive.
I see.
Than somebody that has a lot. Can't guarantee that's what's happening now, but I would assume. Um, and then just because I hear you all are a board that really likes to look at numbers, this is an example of just what a financing stack for something like this might look like in terms of the percentages of the total cost to the project and where that might come from. So just to show sort of how some of these things stack up. Again, making a few assumptions here, making assumptions that the state housing fund is still gonna be there. Um, we can get into the nitty-gritty of this if you all are interested, but assuming that your developer is gonna defer their fee, which is often required for cash flow and performance in the long term, et cetera. Um, but this is using a four percent Lytech, which is actually a smaller upfront subsidy than is available. So, yes, it is expensive here. Yes, it will be hard, and it, it can be done. And that's actually my last slide. Outside of coming back to our initial question of, of what the board would like to hear more about or dig deeper into. Um, in any final plan that we do put in front of you all, we'll have all of these, like Ashley was saying, all of these very detailed components. It'll be more like a business plan probably than like a traditional strategic plan for homeless response that you've seen. Um, but for all of the recommendations that we come back with, we're gonna have, you know, this level of detail in each one of them.
And they will be incremental.
And they will be. Yes, timing is a big piece of it, yes. And they will be incremental, yes. Timing is a big piece of it, yes.
Of the number of chronic homeless, what's the percentage of that number of people who don't want help?
That's a really good question. I think, to be blunt, I don't know.
There is, there, there are some.
There are some.
We just don't know quite how many of...
There are some. And I think what we've seen, again, to use the Denver Social Impact Bond example from the beginning, the vast majority of those folks were the people who didn't want help. And the, what we see is that they don't want the help that's offered. They don't wanna come to a shelter. They don't wanna come to, you know, a service building. They want to be able to feel safe in however they feel safe. Some of the really interesting things that we've seen in PSH are building infrastructure to respond to that specifically. So one of the projects that I'm familiar with, they actually have a space, it's like a, an outdoor space that's sectioned off, but it's right next to the highway. And often when people are transitioning into that building, they sleep there for months because they aren't used to sleeping inside. And so, they have to have that noise and the sirens and the whatever in order to sleep because that's what they've become accustomed to. So yes, there are probably people who don't wanna be in housing. And I think the, the narrative is primarily skewed toward, I don't want the help that's being offered to me or that has been historically offered to me. When you come at it with a trauma-informed approach in a building that's been designed to help people de-escalate from their trauma, you see very different results than some of the stereotypical conversations.
I think the first results we started seeing could have been out of the shelter at the, during COVID, was people, homeless didn't even know what was out there. And I think that, for me, is one of the most important factors in trying to reach out to help the chronically homeless is to, to, if you, if you, I think we do this at the shelter, you, you have to sign up for at least some counseling or some management or some information process. And I, and I think that's really important to keep, you know, for the long-term sheltering of homeless is to have somebody looking after their best interests, whatever their best interests might be. Be it health insurance or some provision of healthcare or rehabilitation if they choose to for smoking or for drugs and alcohol, behavioral assistance. And just the veterans who don't even know they have those veterans benefits out there. I think that's been a huge part of our bringing in some of our homeless into, I'm gonna say the system, but bringing them into where we can offer them assistance.
Well, and many of them have been, I'm trying to think of a professional way to say this, let down by that system. And so, the other side of this is that not only do you have to build the relationship, but you have to repair a relationship that has very likely not existed for that person. So it's easier for them to stay...
Repair is much harder.
Exactly, yeah, absolutely. And it ta, it takes time, right? Street outreach and, and getting people into PSH is the only program where a longer, like a longer engagement is actually a really good thing. Because it often takes years to, to do that work. But once you finally get somebody into a, a unit, then, then they're set, then they're there. And the data shows after two, I think after five years, like ninety percent of people who are in those types of units are still in those units.
It's tough. And when we're in the political side of it, when we're trying to provide housing, it's how, how do we please all the people that need housing or want housing? And we only have a limited amount of resources, both land and dollars, in order to do that. And how do we choose to prioritize and make all the people happy all the time?
That is a tough job that you all have.
Maybe you could jump in as to Ashley's point on incremental. I think some of what staff and SHG is looking for from you all today is, we know that this is a lot. Are there, we're gonna go work, as Cassie said, on bringing back a lot more information on each of these recommendations, but I think wanting to hear from all of you, are there some that are resonating as low, and not low-hanging fruit, but right, as, as ones that maybe would be, you'd wanna look at more in-depth as, as a starting place versus longer term? Kind of how are these recommendations resonating with all of you? And to Patty's point, it's hard to prioritize in the face of such a big dilemma in our community. But are there elements that you all really wanna see us looking at as that initial step?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. I mean, I think it'd be great to hear some strategic planning kind of around sort of the three areas that I see. One, like continuing to build out the data that we collect and figure out strategies for making that more comprehensive. You know, even despite the limitations of HIMSS. You know, what do we, having some strategy around collecting information about homeless families. You know, families experiencing homelessness. You know, some strategies around domestic violence. And if that's not all being absorbed by response, would be sort of one area. And then the other two areas would be building out some strategic thinking relative to, you know, the hundred and five or whatever, you know, of people going in and out of homeless. Like to me, I just see that as, okay, those, that's the opportunity for like the rapid rehousing, right? That's the opportunity for voucher program, you know? And then, you know, the forty-seven sort of chronically homeless, like the opportunities for strategizing there. You know, I, I think permanent supportive housing is a proven, tested, successful model that has to play a role in the whole, sort of whole spectrum of housing that we look at. But like, are there others, you know, that we should be contemplating as well? It's some of the, sort of the three areas that I, I think we could further build out, maybe even before launching into sort of the pro forma exercise of, you know, how would you build a Lytec project for forty-seven people, fifty people that you want, fifty spaces you want in permanent supportive housing or something like that? Francie?
I think that we're working on the sort of people who, the workforce who can't afford housing on their own. So I, and, and I think there's several areas in which we're doing that, including the West Mountain Housing Coalition and our buy-downs and all the stuff that we're trying to do. I think it's actually foremost in our minds most of the time, how do we do that? I think that solving the chronically homeless problem is a place where we need to put a little more focus. And so, I would like to head that direction in response to what you were saying, Cara, about where, I don't know if everybody else feels that way too, but, and I think it's probably, I mean, I really do believe some of those people have the right to not be put in a unit. You know, I mean, and I, and I have seen interviews with people who don't wanna go into a unit because now they're under the jurisdiction of the county or the state or they have rules to follow that they don't wanna follow. So I don't know how many of those people want help in being housed, but for those who do, I think it's a place where we could put more focus.
Can I add to that?
Francie, or Patty?
You're getting back to that.
Patty, you can add to Francie.
And I think case management is part of that. Can we, do we, I guess to be the first question, offer case management to those who don't wanna be housed? Or is that part of the, because I, I think that's key. Because I totally agree, there are people who like living homeless. Because they're used to it, they're comfortable with it, they like that freedom, that lack of government intervention into their lives. For whatever reason, their past history as veterans or whatever. But I think case management still offers them some opportunities for some benefits they could receive that they think they have to be sheltered to get. And so, if we can help those people in some way, that's important to me. Whether it's a roof over their head that they don't want, not, but maybe it's opportunities for food, healthcare, those kind of services.
And that's how you build that relationship?
Yeah.
I did like what you were saying too about the place where they live outside near the highway and stuff. I mean, because in a dry climate like this, we could offer that with, if we had a housing situation and with offices and stuff, we could offer outside living, you know? I, I hadn't thought about that before, I was really glad you said that. I used to be an outfitter and when we would come back at the end of the summer, it was really hard to sleep inside. So it would take us about a week before we'd go sleep in our houses.
Yeah. This was an example, I think in older number, I can't remember, but it was specifically one person who helped the program design. Oh, sorry. It was one person who helped design the space, who'd been sleeping outside for ten years. And it was, they almost lost their housing because they could not be in their unit.
Inside, yeah.
With these thoughts in mind, we will take some of this and relook at this high level just to make sure it's worded and kind of captures the discussion here today and then start kind of exploring what some of these things would look like. Permanent supportive housing, where it sounds like Francie and maybe others wanna focus, is a long-term plan that we need to start working on, you know, yesterday to be ready for any opportunities that may come up. So I think kind of regardless, unless you all say you don't wanna work on that at all, we'll continue to understand what that means and what kind of partners we need and start to really think through that and, and bring you all some more details. As far as kind of the, we've been calling it, I think, the voucher program, which is like the rentals. I think we're, we'll go and get a much better understanding of the true rental market and kind of seeing how far off we are. And I think there's some testing of the idea with like private landlords and if that's even feasible. So I think we have a lot of kind of testing some of these ideas before we bring back to you, okay, if you wanted to move forward something, here's what it might, might look like. I think the APSHA piece is a, is another piece we're looking for some like policy direction on or something, so.
Yes, real quick, can I?
Well, I wanna ask a specific question just that I forgot to ask. Is there, when you're looking at rapid rehousing, is there a period of time? Like, are you looking at a voucher program or no?
Yeah, so the second recommendation of like rental subsidies, it can be modeled after rapid rehousing, which is that max twenty-four months. That is a federal definition. Just to be blunt, that kind of comes out of, that's what the federal government's set. So who knows if that's actually the right way to go about it? Most families who are in rapid rehousing, on average, use about eight months of assistance. So it's a much lower acuity population. And then a voucher by definition is something that's not time-limited. So as long as they're eligible and need it and want it, that would be how a voucher is defined. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Sorry, Patty and then Jeffrey.
Mine's real quick. You know, we have a down payment assistance program. Is there a program out there to help, I think there is, help people with first and last deposit security?
That is often how rapid rehousing is used. And, and again, depending on the funding source, you can do like double down payments. So there's different ways that you can build that in.
So it's a down payment, but it's not like a down payment to purchase a house, it's a down payment to get into a unit.
Yeah.
We were talking about that early on in another matter and I think that's something that people really need to come up with that money to get into something that they find, and they find it impossible.
Yeah, and I would say that would be from, from two perspectives. So with people who are literally homeless, a rapid rehousing-type model does the security deposit and the rent. But then if we go back to that population who just need some housing stability because they needed to move or whatever and they can't find that security deposit, that is often the one thing that keeps them from being able to find housing.
I'd, I'd like to see more information on that.
Jeffrey?
Sorry, Jeffrey.
So three parts. First, I'd love, love to see more of the economic justification. So specifically, I think there was one slide, it looked like a bunch of horizontal bar charts. So for example, if we went back to the community and said, look, we could reduce the costs to the SO, we could reduce the cost to caseworkers, we could reduce these costs, and they're gonna end up over here. So I'd love to see more of the economic justification and how this plays out. There's really no mention of the federal nexus and the, for lack of a better term, the goofy EO that just came out. So how does this play relative to, and, and again, nothing needs to be answered today. So I'd rather see you come back and say, look, we are interested in federal funding vis-à-vis, what's the one in Basalt next to our offices? The Roberta Project? Roberta's project?
Real America?
Yeah, I love saying Real America. You know, how does that pencil out? Is that a project that we wanna do here? Because that really was, you know, we, I, I won't go into Real America. So one is fiscal support, economic justification. Two is if we use either employee housing impact fee or tax dollars for permanent supportive housing, it seems like we're going beyond the ballot and/or the employee housing impact fee if we're also providing services. So in other words, that nexus between building units and then services that would be associated with them. Again, it doesn't need to be covered today.
I, I do wanna make a clarification. The proposal is not to use housing impact fee for permanent supportive housing.
Sorry, that's where I got it.
I think it was saying that we would not be using it because that has a workforce component tied to it, so.
So the question then is, again, still remains, when we talk about permanent supportive housing, it's a service as well as a good, it's units as well as behavioral health or other offices that are there. And my question is, the goal of the board, the mandate of the board is build two-hundred-and-fifty units. So to me, if you are allocating tax dollars that are housing, it's separate from the service dollars that, that's human services. Again, observation, don't need a reply.
Jeffrey, the ballot, the Affordable and Workforce Housing Mill Levy specifically said services and capital expenses to support homelessness.
Which is the two-hundred thousand dollars that we just spent, right? Wasn't there a number allocated in twenty-five, twenty-six?
In twenty-twenty-five, but within the ballot language, there is no percentage of which dollar amount goes where. It was intentionally left open-ended as future, as boards choose to allocate funding.
So and the third, again, doesn't need to be answered today, is I'm interested in this uncovering sort of the APSHA units that could be repurposed, that are assets in the closets that are potentially misclassified. I don't know a better term for it, but thank you.
Thank you.
Just if I can respond to the EO. Fortunately, unfortunately, that's gonna be the vouchers that you all can't use because of that fair market rent limit. So it's a, it's a thing that exists, but it's probably not gonna have that much of an impact.
And so, the public knows an EO is an executive order.
Thank you, yes. The goofy executive order.
Reminding that we need to be clear on some of our...
Fortunately, unfortunately, that, that's not a resource that's on the table for you all. Yeah, because of that fair market rent limitation.
Thank you.
And I would just maybe offer, if, if the report we received is still editable, incorporating some of what you presented today, I think would help clarify the picture even further. I think some of what I left with when I left the report was like, okay, so here's our situation and here are some potential strategies, but I didn't like connect how they were gonna work together. And I think you've done a nice job of teeing that up with your slides today, and so I just would suggest that.
It is, was half of the, this is the background report and as we were coming into today, I was like, oh, we may, maybe should have come out of it a different way.
Yeah, just, you know, if you want, one, if a person's gonna read it in one spot, you know, they're, they could.
Yeah.
Francie?
So just the fact that our homeless population is probably considerably less than many of the areas that receive help, does that reduce our eligibility for some of the funds?
No. And what I mean by that is, how do I say this? A good grant writer will help you be eligible for however you need to be eligible. It's about how you frame that narrative. I think the other thing that differentiates you all from other areas is that you have this local tax. Especially in places like Colorado, they really like to see local skin in the game. And so, that's an opportunity to sort of leverage your local dollars to bring in some more of those pieces. But most of the programs that I'm aware of that we're thinking about for this project specifically won't look at, oh, you only have forty-seven chronically homeless people because you also have a smaller general population. So you could look at per capita, you could look at cost. Like there, there are many different ways to, to go about that.
Doesn't that sort of fly in the face a little bit of like the Built-for-Zero goal? I mean, all goals to get everybody out of homelessness, you know, regardless of theirs. Forty-seven people in our community and four-hundred-and-seventy people somewhere else.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, it's just more of a, I guess, a testament. Like, you know, if the, if the state's focused on solving homelessness, you know?
Doesn't matter that you only...
Yeah, you know, then that's every person. You know, regardless of their distribution in the population, I would hope.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of the amount of money per person. So if... So if, you know, if you're building shelters that can house 100 people, it's probably not going to cost two, twice as much as building one for 47 people, you know.
I mean, Response got $3.4 million for their shelter from the state.
What?
Response, yeah.
And, and what I will say is that some of the intensive services that would be needed for that 47 are the ones that are not at the federal level. So it's the state Medicaid, it's the state housing voucher program, and they're very dedicated to the Built for Zero mission.
Okay.
All right, any other last thoughts or questions? This was great. Thank you all.
Thank you all for the time today.
I'm really thrilled with the progress. Really forward to the ongoing communication. I will, I'm wondering, I guess I want to have a little check-in because we continue to want to bring the city of Aspen back in the fray in our partnership along these things. And so is this ripe to propose it as a joint meeting discussion for September?
No? Did have a little bit of a chat. I, I think that, um, the, where staff is sitting is let us come back with a little bit more meat on the bones of what the recommendations are and kind of what is we're looking for, for our community to be able to have a little bit more structure for, and bring that to the city for inviting them into the conversation.
Before we invite a reaction.
I think it's going to be more positive. I think some of what they were looking for was a clearer picture on the data and the landscape. And so this definitely gets us there, but that's fine.
And city staff have been involved with SHG as partners and part of all the working groups. And we let them know about the report today and all of that. So staff are tracking and following and I think later this year will be teed up to bring in elected.
Okay, that sounds good. Thanks for that advice. All right. Okay, moving on. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Um, our next update is going to be on our climate action plan. We'll transition our team. Does anyone need a short break while they get set up? All right, let's take a few minute break.
Go step outside.
Welcome back, everyone, to the Picken County Board of County Commissioner Work Session on Tuesday, August 19th. We are all looking forward to hearing our Climate Action Plan Progress Update with Michael Port, who is our climate action.
Analyst.
Analyst, I'm like manager, analyst, okay. Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, commissioners. Good to see you. Hopefully my slide's coming up. There it is. Yeah, thanks for having me for this Climate Action Plan Progress Update. We adopted our Climate Action Plan back in March. So we've had about six months of work implementation on our, on our plan. And I'm really excited to share what we've been working on. And I think we are already off to a really good start on implementing a lot of what we set out to do in this Climate Action Plan. One of the questions that you had at the end of that presentation when we adopted it back in March was sort of around how we prioritize investing in the cap because we have so many different priorities that we've outlined. So in today's presentation, I want to share what we've been working on for implementation and start trying to answer that question around how we prioritize investment. The particular project that we're going to preview for you today, the energy audit, is our, our attempt at starting to answer that question. In terms of logistics, I'm going to pause throughout this presentation for questions if you have them. So, um, yeah, if you want to save them for those moments, you can do that. Or just go ahead and ask me questions when you want to. This meeting or presentation is, is really information only. We don't need any direction from you at this point unless you have any, any comments or, or input that you want to provide. What we're going to do is start off with a refresher on the Climate Action Plan. I'll just spend a few minutes how we, on how we developed it, what the scope of that plan is, because that'll help me describe how we're focusing on implementation. Moving into then an overview of what we've been working on in 2025 and some milestones of what we want to hit before, uh, the end of our plan in 2030. And then finally, I will preview this facility-wide energy audit project that we are kicking off this year. You're familiar with our climate action goals. I always want to start with these because this, he set the direction for the Climate Action Plan that we adopted. We adopted them in 2021. They described the what as well as the how of our climate action work. So the what is that we're going to reduce emissions 90% from 2019 levels by 2050. So really, we're trying to eliminate carbon emissions by 2050 from the county. We also pledge to work with regional entities to adapt to the impacts of climate change as a, a growing recognition that, that that's going to be really important for us as well as to equitably involve stakeholders in the work that we do. When we have those goals, what we do first is try to estimate where our emissions are coming from. This helps us put our emission sources into buckets, categorize the work that we're doing. This is the breakdown of emissions from unincorporated Picken County in 2023. The blue and yellow sections are, uh, buildings. So that's our biggest single source of emissions in the county. The next biggest is transportation in gray. It's about one-third. The, uh, what we added in the most recent inventory, the orange slice, is coal basin emissions. Uh, we had, got some great data from Core about the methane that's passively leaking from the Coal Basin Mine Complex. And to do a more true comprehensive accounting of our emissions, we decided to add those in for the 2023 analysis. And then the remaining slices are related to solid waste and wastewater treatment. Knowing that, we looked at the scope of the departments that we have in the county. We have a, as you know, a wide variety of different departments in ways that we can try to influence our carbon emissions and try to reduce them. We worked over the course of spring of last year through the winter of 2025 to bring our different departments together in cross-cutting meetings to talk about the various ways that we're already trying to respond to the climate crisis and what we can do in addition to that. And we think about it in terms of what we're doing for our county operations, which could be like our fleet and facilities, but also our community-facing departments. We have, you know, a lot of service and policy impact that we can provide through our departments such as ComDev and Solid Waste Center, um, among others. And of course, this is not a all-inclusive list, but just breaking down how we think about where we can impact emissions reductions. And one other thing to mention here is our Climate Action Plan is really county, county-owned, county-led. We don't rely on other actors in our community to implement things. It's all what we can control over the next five years. Through that process, we ended up with the following focus areas for the next five years. We wanted our Climate Action Plan to be nimble. The space is constantly changing. So we have our target date, um, of 2030. We have those sections that are focused on, more on county operations, including governance, which is sort of the policies and processes that we have. How do we enable climate action to be really embedded in our organization just in the way that we do business? We also have a section on county-owned buildings and infrastructure, fleet. And then in the community-facing section, um, land use, building and energy codes, solid waste management. And then natural resource management is a bit more of a, um, uh, cross-cutting issue where we're talking about carbon reduction, but also carbon sequestration. We have a, we're going to have a lot of impacts to our open space because of climate change. So this was sort of an, a new area for us to include in our Climate Action Plan. Here, highlighting for you the, the format of our Climate Action Plan, we have high-level goals for each of the sections. And then there are sub-strategies and supporting actions of how we're going to achieve each of those goals. We, for the most part, don't have, or they're primarily qualitative goals. I think what we're trying to figure out is what is our trajectory to try and get to 2050? We weren't able to really, um, fold that into this plan. But we're going to keep working at that and figure out what our trajectory is to get to zero emissions by 2050 or 90% reduction. Um, and each, each section has a lead department, supporting departments, and resource needs, really trying to highlight the fact that this is not just one department working on our Climate Action Plan. It is a, it is a collaborative effort across the organization. So that you already knew all of that. I just want to pause in case there are any questions so far.
Jeffrey then Patty.
A quick one. Given the, the pie chart and our recent conversations with Levi regarding solid waste and methane, is the juice worth the squeeze? Meaning?
I can't hear you and I'm standing right next to you.
So, so, solid waste is such a small part of the overall pie. And we have a push at the state level to clean up our act at the landfill. The question really is, is that worth dedicating the resources to updating the landfill? The question really is, is that worth dedicating the resources to updating the landfill, given it's such a small part of the overall portfolio of emissions?
So in terms of what, what our Climate Action Program wants to focus on in the near term, it is those really high, high impact, or what are the biggest slices of the pie right now? Those are really complicated and complex areas that we need to focus on. It's my understanding with the landfill, like the, the cost and how diffuse the methane is, maybe makes it a kind of a technical challenge as well to try and implement a system, so more like monitoring and trying to figure out right now what the emissions actually are is, is kind of the right place to be.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I was going for the cost benefit of each of that, so, great, I get, I get the pie, but really, where do we start to devote money?
Yeah, we've not done a cost benefit for, I think what, what we would need to do in that case, if we want to start looking at cost benefit, is what are the comparisons of different actions, and that's not something that we have done to this point.
I mean, in my mind, we're walking around with a $3 million number to do, to retrofit existing landfill, is that the best use of money, or should we be, you know, electrifying three buildings in downtown Aspen? So that's kind of where I'm like, okay, I don't see that in the cards yet.
Yeah, yeah, that's a question to be, to be answered in the future, I think.
Thank you.
And with climate planning, the data is, is our best guess, right? We don't have actual air monitors out there, and it's always incremental, so while the biggest thing we can do is electrify every single building in the county, there's so many steps to that, which starts with actually measuring which buildings are taking up the most and which are eligible for electrification, which are not, et cetera. So I think the landfill is akin to still being in that measuring stage before saying, well, what's the biggest, if we're going to tackle that piece of the pie that is solid waste, what's the single biggest thing we can do in that pie? We still are at the measurement stage to even identify that. And it's great to focus on the buildings right now, but as those get smaller, then solid waste gets bigger, right? If we're trying to go for 90% by 2050, we will have to tackle things in each one, but I will say, the, the science behind climate science is not perfected, and so there's, even though we have great GHG emission data in each sector, there's still so much tracking and kind of understanding of those big items that still needs to be done.
I think the other nature of the conversation or the question is really around, there's other counties that are pushing back on the state in terms of unfunded mandates, and the question is if, if we as a board, we're going to say, great, we want to invest $3 million in landfill, is that better than just saying, you know what, we're just going to fully electrify fleet? And so I'm trying to see where do we get to that level of granularity in the data that we can make those informed decisions?
And I mean, I think if I may, I'm not sure if we're going to get to, right, because it's kind of an apples to oranges, I think that with the Climate Action Plan, what Michael's putting together is, this is really starting to see what are the different efforts that the county is looking at for you all to be giving some prioritization, especially as funding is changing. That now, because of the work that Michael and the Climate Action Team has been doing, we are able to kind of put it all together of where it's happening versus kind of in some different silos, so probably not going to get that level of granularity, but at least we can get the menu out there for you all to get, have those policy discussions of where to be prioritizing the funding that is available.
Fair. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi.
Yeah, a couple things real quick, well, maybe not real quick. Research management, we're not, you know, we don't have a resource management plan, correct?
As far as I know.
Okay, like Garfield County does, and other counties do. I would like us to look into some kind of formal resource management plan, and I think it's, I think the definition's a little different than what you're implying here in your Agenda Item Summary, but I think that's something we might want to talk about in the future if we want to have a formal resource management plan. We would need to see what other communities are doing to see if that's the resource management plan we are talking about, or if what we're thinking is different. But I, I would like to further investigate that. And then I think we need to be careful, again, I'm going to bring it up with the key words like climate change and equitability, you know, if we're equitable, just in case we wanted to look for grants in the future, we need to be careful with the words that we use today, and maybe not after November, but we'll see. So I think that's another issue. My other one is a little more maybe abstract, so if we want to reduce, I think we need to do what we can do and determine as a priority to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, but if we don't have partnerships with our neighboring counties, our neighboring municipalities, if we're doing whatever we can and they're not coming up to speed or doing anything, what's the impact to our county when we do measurements of green horse, greenhouse gases? That, you know, I mean, it has to be a unified effort, especially since we're at the end of the valley, and you know, greenhouse gases don't, no boundary lines, so that's something I think we need to be trying to focus as part of our effort to move forward, is how we can get some kind of equitable partnerships going on here with the other communities.
Yeah, I fully agree with that, and I think we are always trying to find ways to partner and collaborate. You know, I have a close relationship with the city sustainability team, and you know, the Sustainable Aviation Fuel Project is a really good example of us working with even, you know, farther, in a, in a different valley, or not even a valley, working with Mesa County on that, so for sure, we, we want to find those opportunities, because you're right, the emissions don't respect our boundaries.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, I will go ahead and move us on to start talking about new information that you have not heard, and about what we're working on with implementation. I think in this first six months or so, these are the main themes that I can tell you about, so we're building relationships across the organization. Again, a big emphasis of the Climate Action Plan was that it's not owned by any one department, we're trying to get, break down silos and form relationships between the Climate Action Team, other departments, get those departments to start talking to each other on these issues, and we're starting to build those relationships in capacity through this first six months, and we'll continue to do that. I think it's also cool when our climate projects can provide information that's useful for the organization, not just related to how we reduce carbon emissions. One of the projects that we worked on was an employee commuting survey that got about a 40% response rate, and you know, that's really interesting information for how we, how we run as an organization and how people get to work, what is their experience with that? I think that can be used in a lot of different ways for the county, potentially, if we want to do that. So I was proud of getting that data to, to some other folks around the county, and also very excited to say that we have 13 of 38 of the specific actions in the plan that are already underway or have made good progress on, and I will tell you a bit more about those in the coming slides. Thanks, Ashley. This is, this attachment was, was in your packet, so I'm not going to read through this exactly, but I will zoom in to specific sections and call out some of the main projects that we are working on this year and what we're looking forward to on the way to 2030. In the county-owned buildings and infrastructure section, we are going to have full implementation of the microgrid project, so we have our battery operational. Over the fall, we're going to have the actual microgrid control system set up such that in the event of a power outage, that will be operational and that area can draw renewable energy from the battery, so that's very exciting. We are also kicking off our Energy Audit Project, looking forward to leading that project and the results that it hopefully will give us moving into 2026. And we're going to lean on that to inform our facilities electrification strategy now and into the future, because that is a long-term project to retrofit all of our county offices and incorporate all of the clean energy goals that we have for those. Another huge impact is going to be our new terminal at the airport, that is our biggest energy user at the county within our organization, so also within unincorporated Picken County, it's one of the biggest energy users, so that's going to be very impactful for, for the county. In 2025, for the Clean Fleet and Employee Commuting Section, as I mentioned, the Employee Commute Survey was completed in the spring. We are also piloting all-electric heavy equipment, we have an electric loader that was being used at the airport and is going to start being trialed at the landfill. In terms of our fleet, we have a lot of heavy equipment that really, there's no good electric alternatives right now, so trying to test those different technologies is going to be an important strategy for us. And then looking ahead, 2026 through 2030, we are transitioning our EV fleet, we, we are able to purchase those vehicles, but I think there are, there are going to be operational questions that we have to answer of how to best roll those out, they're not an exact one-for-one compared to a gas vehicle, so different departments will have different needs for EVs that we're going to start answering those questions. And I hope I'm not spoiling this for Matt, but we're expanding down-valley charging. We're looking at installing a charger at River Park Center, that's the Basalt office, and that is going to be really important for us to support EV transition for our fleet as we're providing services down-valley as well. In the land use section, this is really ComDev's domain, and they're doing a ton of work this year, or over the last many years, and working still hard in 2025, but the comprehensive plan update incorporated, climate mitigation and resilience, it's really important to just get climate into all of our, like, planning and policy documents. And the code project of Vision 2050 and the updates that are being worked on are going to start getting us towards net zero or, you know, all-electric new construction by 2030, so over the next years, we're phasing that in, which is, again, one of our biggest sources of emissions in the county from buildings. For the solid waste focus area in 2025, really what I want to highlight here is the all-electric set of new, new buildings that they're going to be constructing out there for the expansion. I also learned that they're looking at solar as well as battery backup out there, so that's, they're really leading by example for the county in showing how to build fully electric, resilient buildings. And then over the next four years, we're going to be working on our county operations waste diversion, not necessarily a huge climate impact, but we want to make sure that we are leading by example in our, in our operations, that we're providing waste diversion for all of our employees. Another project that was highlighted there in this section was a regional waste coalition, so we have, similar to greenhouse gas emissions, like, our waste is very regional-based, and things like construction and demolition, organics, these are issues that we could better address if we had a more consistent approach across the whole valley, because the solid waste owner does bring in waste from different jurisdictions. And the, the goal that we're aiming for in this focus area is a 50% waste diversion rate by 2030, I believe right now we're in the low 40s, so that should be, should be And then finally, in the natural resource management section, we worked with the Open Space and Trails Board to develop a climate policy, that's still in the works, but it is going to describe how open space and trails will, or how the board thinks about climate in terms of the, the operations and programs that Open Space and Trails provides for the county. And then looking ahead, again, this is a pretty new field for the climate realm, so we're going to be trying to do a lot of pilot programs and research on what open space and trails can do to sequester carbon, or figure out ways to promote better, you know, agricultural practices through our LEAS program, things of that nature, so I think we're going to learn, learn a lot of interesting stuff through that work. I also want to call out the Climate Governance Section, these were not specific items that have a timeline, again, this is more like policy and process, but we have a lot going on in, in this section right now as well. So one of the pieces is how we integrate into county systems, so we have been working to integrate into the 2026 budget process, in the, in the budget profiles, there's a section of how, how departmental budgets are relating and supporting Climate Action As I'll tell you more about in the next part of the presentation, we're researching funding strategies for us to implement our operations, energy efficiency and electrification projects. And then to the regional aspect, how we leverage our resources to support regional climate solutions, the Sustainable Aviation Fuel Feasibility Study is going on right now, we're also, I heard, developing some legislative advocacy around SAF development, so these are things that benefit, you know, beyond the county border. And then as well, our annual investment in Core has been a main way that we support community-wide building electrification. What we're excited for in 2026 in particular, the outcomes of the Energy Audit and geothermal feasibility studies are going to be really critical to help us figure out how we can decarbonize our facilities, the geothermal being near the airport might be, might be something that, that project needs to tap into to achieve its climate goals. We will also have the results of the Sustainable Aviation Fuel Feasibility Study to figure out what the next steps are for that, if it is feasible to have SAF development on the Western Slope, and how, what our role is in that. And then finally, climate adaptation planning, we have our, our climate goal of resilience, but we've not fully, like, articulated what, what we mean by that, so we're going to start diving into that work in 2026 to define what we mean by resilience and what our role is in supporting that. Okay, I'll pause there again for any questions.
So go back a slide. So for those of you that have not driven, that is the Chevy Silverado EV at the bottom, the range is like 480 miles, and so I pulled out one day with Matt, we might have exceeded the speed limit on Highway 82 between Brush Creek Park and Ride and, and Public Works, and the first person we see when we pull into the parking lot is the SO, so, but if you haven't had a chance, it's brilliant, and the range, again, is close to 500 miles. It's, yeah, it's, it's incredible.
We're, we're working on at the employee picnic, a little ride-and-drive event for our EVs, so.
Are you including the EV motorcycle?
TBD.
Okay, that one's pretty amazing as well. Are you going to touch on, I don't know what the acronym means, the Northwest Council of Governments?
Northwest Colorado Council of Governments.
Are you going to touch on that partnership, or we should wait till the next meeting?
That will, that will be in the next presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, without any other questions, I will carry on. So the final piece of the presentation is previewing our, our Energy Audit Project. May seem a bit in the weeds, but I am bringing this to you next week at the regular meeting for first reading of an MOU, so just want to preview what this is. Again, buildings are the biggest part of our GHG footprint, so that's where I'm focusing a lot of effort right now in this first year. We budgeted for an Energy Audit this year to understand our buildings and help us plan for our electrification projects, and what I found through research was a program from the Colorado Energy Office called their Energy Performance Contracting Program. from the Colorado Energy Office called their Energy Performance Contracting Program. So the first chunk of that program is an energy audit. And I'll just walk through these steps, but we can get an energy audit that's called an investment grade audit through this process. What we also get is assistance from the Colorado Energy Office to help facilitate and guide us through this process. So the first step is signing an MOU for technical assistance from the Energy Office. They will help us to select a pre-qualified vendor. There there are 15 or so companies in the state that can provide this service. And this does fit within our original budget that we put together. And we will contract with that vendor after an RFP process this fall, hopefully, to perform that investment grade audit. And it includes a detailed assessment of our portfolio of buildings. But what it also does is help recommend improvements to save energy and financing and funding strategy. So it it goes a couple of steps beyond just doing an energy audit. When we have that audit report done, we have a decision point, which is to decide whether or not we would want to enter into this energy performance contract, which essentially is a way for us to pay for installation of building upgrades over time with verified energy savings. So it creates a new tool in the tool belt for us to pay for our electrification and building improvements that we want to do through this different financing mechanism that we have worked through with with RYE and Finance Department to understand that this we are would be eligible for this. But it is something that we want to get the audit report and decide if it's advantageous for us to go into this EPC or pay for the upgrades ourselves.
Oh, I was just going to say, we jumped right into using the term audit very quickly. Maybe some of you or the public has had an energy assessment on your home, but what we find is that a lot of folks start really big projects. Like, oh, I want new windows or I want to electrify or something like that without really ever understanding what's going on in their building. So while that may be fine if it's your own home, given how many large kind of aging buildings we have as the county, we honestly can't really start energy efficiency or further electrification work without having these complete audits. And the last time we did one was over 10 years ago, potentially 15 years ago. So not that we don't know what's going in our going on in our buildings, but we definitely don't have a comprehensive picture of which buildings are performing great, which ones kind of back to your question earlier on, Jeffrey, of where's the biggest bang for the buck? An assessment or an audit, kind of you can use those words interchangeably, tells you, how's it performing? If you're going to spend money, spend money here. And then if we do decide to go forward with some sort of contracting, they're only going to pay for those high-impact things. So it really helps us direct our funds and our energy.
Resources.
Yeah, our resources towards the right place, so we're not spinning our wheels with something that maybe isn't going to have that much impact. Sorry, we just jumped right into the term audit, which is not always, people don't necessarily know what it means.
Thank you.
So is this specific to buildings only or will there be other components of our climate action emitters that will be auditing?
Yeah, this process can also include EV charging infrastructure. It can also include like solar, any any kind of capital, clean energy capital project could be folded into this scope. And that's something that we'll develop with the Energy Office as we're scoping this project. But it could could include our geothermal project and other things that we're working on beyond just the building envelope.
Would it include like transportation? Would we be auditing our transportation resources and?
So that 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 would be out of scope, I think. It is in terms of transportation, we could include our EV charging needs that we anticipate wanting to do in the future. Potentially also vehicles, but that's kind of the scope of the transportation study that could be done. Yeah, and to build on what Ashley was saying a little bit, why why are we recommending this course of action? This is a 20 or so year old program with the state that has a proven track record of achieving energy-saving goals for government entities. We are looking at like the town of Vail is actually pursuing this for a very similar scope of work that we would want to do as a as a way to support their climate action programs. And I spoke with multiple other mountain communities that are using this as a way to implement certain aspects of their climate action priorities. What it does beyond the standard energy audit, so in both cases, we would get a report, we would get some energy modeling, we would get recommendations of what energy saving measures we could we could install. But the benefit of this investment grade audit process is we got this extended funding strategy analysis. We have this potential financing tool that we can rely on. We will get this third-party assistance from the Colorado Energy Office. That would be super helpful as we have limited capacity within the organization to, you know, we don't have a ton of experience with these projects, we're still learning, so that would be very helpful to our team, I think. And with with all of that, if we were to proceed into that energy performance contract, there's two years of measurement and verification that we are actually achieving the savings and the the outcomes that were identified in the report. So there's a lot of benefits beyond the standard energy audit that we were going to do for the same amount of money, essentially. And I wanted to preview this for you because we are coming back next week with the MOU that we would sign with the Colorado Energy Office for that technical assistance that will kick off this process.
Okay, do we have any idea if it's on in the discussion currently going on at the State House about budget? And is this going to be cut?
I don't know.
Yeah, because I think they're looking at everything, aren't they, Kelly? To balance the budget, they're looking at everything at the state level.
I'm sure they are.
But the.
We need just to keep our eye on that, so.
I think what we do know in particular, what has funded a lot of the projects, which has been really helpful, is through DOLA's Energy Impact Assistant Fund.
And that's being looked at to be.
Right, and we do know that it's pretty even before this session, so that funding source is limited for right now specifically on.
Yeah.
But there's other ones that we are looking at too.
Yeah.
I will say, the reason we're looking at this is because if this was five years ago or two years ago, we were confident in our ability to at least get some amount of funding to support some of these things. As we all know, that's when we're looking at climate projects, the funding is is very small. And so the reason we're looking at this is because the actual energy savings could pay for the projects if we decide to go that route. And then we're working not with the state, we're working with the energy service provider, energy company. So it's an interesting route because it divert, you know, it splits us off from relying on state money to get some of these projects done. And it really holds our feet to the fire on making sure they're the highest impact return on investment items because a private company is essentially paying for them, knowing they're getting the energy savings back. So it's a we want to bring it to you because it's a new strategy, knowing that we cannot rely on our old strategies solely to get this work done.
I think we need to pursue it like it's going to happen, because if you don't and it happens, then you're left out of the loop. But the other question I would have too is if we don't have any outside funding or working agreements with energy providers, where is it going to come if we decide to move forward, where would it come from out of the county fund, general fund money? Oh, that was that was.
That was good timing.
Over to you, Michael.
When you're on a blind date, you want to leave the room, you have somebody call you, she tells you.
Right. Well, maybe Kara can respond to that a little bit.
You know that?
The dog daycare.
You know that.
Information about an incoming grant.
I think that if we were to look at it, we would probably be looking right now because it's within the facilities budget, it'd be looking within the general fund.
Wanted to note that.
Jeffrey.
It's early days, but what's the relationship between the manager's office, between both of you and and the airport?
And the.
Airport.
Yeah.
In other words, the following question is, of course, how do we track our goals? Given we have the plan, we have a new small terminal being designed. So are you part of the design team on a dotted line? Where do you fit in relative to PAE?
That's a good question, and I appreciate their their presentation of the design team that we're going to have the most sustainable airport in the world. That is a lofty goal, and I I hope we get there. So there is a meeting occurring tomorrow. I was told it's kind of a bit higher level than than needed, but they have a really great team of sustainability experts on that team. And I will provide input where where needed to make sure that the work that they're doing is in alignment. I think we haven't fully established like where the where those input opportunities are. But yeah, that's a good question.
Thank you.
And I can just say, some of my direction and support there has also been the airport through the ASC Vision had a lot of these lofty climate goals. You all in 2023 identified that the resources and climate goals through the rest of the county needed resources. And so really bringing Michael and that resource into the county was we've got a lot of it covered through all the experts at the airport. How do we give that attention to the rest of the areas of the county, which I think Michael is really being able to elevate here today?
Other questions?
Thank you. With that, I will end on our climate goals again.
You know, the landfill stole the slide.
I I lent it to them. Knowingly from me, yeah. So after a break or in the next presentation, you're going to hear from Core. They help us in two ways. They're they're our main vehicle for investing in the community when it comes to the built environment. So they're an essential partner for us that we are appreciate their collaboration. And that's through the REMF Fund and also really appreciate that they have been spearheading the work on Coal Basin as one of our big emitters in the county. So their work has been really critical for us there as well. So I just want to tee it up for Core in the next presentation, and thanks for your time.
Let me ask one question about what you were just talking about, though. I mean, you said energy companies, you know, we have a handful, right, that we're relying on that may have opportunities to help us fund these? Or should I be thinking more broadly?
There are 15 or so companies that are qualified through this program that have sort of slightly different sets of expertise, but they can provide these energy performance contracts and they can enter into these agreements under this state program.
Because it's they're all connected, so it doesn't really matter who the our service provider is here, as long as it's getting to them on the grid, they can monetize that.
So the these are these are like technical consultants who are doing evaluation of the buildings. They are they're not like a utility, if that's what you mean.
I think the question is like, if we're on Holy Cross Electric and we save a bunch of energy, we're not working with like our direct service provider.
They're monetizing our savings to give us money to do stuff, but we have two providers.
A middleman between the actual utility company and this energy service, the energy service provider is the middleman to help with the savings.
Got it, so we're not going to City of Aspen Utilities, like trying to get them to send us money for our savings that we give them on the grid. Okay, thank you. This is creative.
All right, thanks very much.
All right.
Thanks, y'all.
Great job, guys.
Could we, we have a scheduled break, we did take a break before this. Does anyone need a few minutes or we'll keep a good shoving? Okay, we'll invite our Core team to come on up.
Oh, yeah, we've got her here.
You can run up and grab your cheese.
We got a 30-second break?
Yeah. Why don't we just take two minutes so the folks at home don't have to watch us? Welcome back, everyone, to the Pickens County Board of County Commissioners Work Session on Tuesday, August 19th. We are going to hear a mid-year update from Core, the Office for, I'm going to. Community Office for Resource Efficiency. Thank you, and their 2026 funding proposal. How are you?
Thanks, Commissioners. I just wanted to quickly introduce Tara Stittsline from Core, who's going to be giving their presentation today. We provided a staff cover memo for you in the packet. And you're just going to go and provide us an update on what they've been working on similarly in 2025 and then look ahead to 2026. So I'll kick it over to Tara.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Michael, for the introduction and.
Thank you, Michael, for the introduction and for teeing up this presentation. I am gonna just get the slideshow started here. Nice to see you all, Commissioners. My name's Tara Stitline. I'm the Director of Climate Action Programs at Core. For those of you who have not had the pleasure of meeting before.
The red light is on.
The red light is on.
That means it's on. We do that just to confuse people.
Thank you. I was looking for a green light. Yeah, like Michael said, happy to be here today to share an update on Core's work in 2025 and where we're hoping to go the rest of this year and into 2026. This is an overview of what I'll talk about today. So I've got a lot to cover here, but happy to pause for questions throughout as they come up. And if there's no comments or questions, I will just go ahead and dive in and get started. So I'll preface my first slide with just a refresher on our contract award, our grant award from the county for 2025. So this year, we were awarded approximately $780,000 grant to support building energy efficiency and electrification projects through our Building Performance Hub. And just over $500,000 of that was dedicated to pushing out incentives into the community in the form of grants, rebates, and subsidized assessments. So this first slide here, you'll see just an overview of the incentives that we've awarded so far in 2025. The blue bar is the total amount that Core has awarded throughout our whole territory. And the yellow bar represents the total that we've awarded in Pickin County. And I'll just point out that there was a small correction made from the memo that we shared with y'all. I had not included the assessment in the total amount. And then there's a correction on the breakdown slide. But this, this shows you our progress to date on pushing out those incentives throughout our territory, which represents time on energy advising and facilitating those subsidized energy assessments and awarding grants and rebates. One additional lens and thing to consider when you're looking at these numbers is that yellow bar that represents Pickin County incentives also accounts for projects that happen in communities where we receive support from like the City of Aspen and Snowmass. So that's, that's not entirely Pickin County funding, but we are just over 50% of our budgeted spending on incentives for the year and on a good trajectory, trajectory to end the year on or above target in terms of our incentive spending. Any questions on this slide?
How much, how much of your revenue is actually generated then in Garfield or Eagle? So in other words, what are they contributing, given over half the money is leaving the county, yet the revenues generated, the core funds through RAMP are generated here?
Eagle County's contribution in 2025 represented a smaller portion than Pickin's. Our overall contract with Eagle is about half of the amount of Pickin County's 2025 contract. We're in the process of, we're just starting the process of developing that for 2026. And we do not receive funding from Garfield County, but I've got a slide later in the presentation that talks about the philanthropic arm of Core and what we've done in developing that to help both multiply the effects or the impacts of county, county funds within the county and give us the flexibility to expand our impact by, by providing us with other funding sources that can be used flexibly.
It would be fun to see Garfield oil and gas money turned into incentives.
It would be.
I think, do they fund CLEAR?
For, yes, yes, they do.
Do they fund their organization that's based within Garfield County?
Well, the Garfield Clean Energy Board, on which I am a representative for R A F T A, their work is done by CLEAR. So it's the board and it's for Garfield. And it's mostly for like upgrades in residences and, and commercial buildings and also tracking energy use and stuff. And the CLEAR, Morgan Hill mostly does a lot of the work for them. She's from CLEAR.
Bringing it back to Pickin County, this, this next slide is just a further breakdown of where the funding's going within Pickin County. So 182,000 has been awarded to residential participants, 73,000 in the commercial category, and then 80,000 to government entities, and both of those are school district projects. And this is where there was a correction from the memo. The total amount went up a little bit, but then there was a miscategorization. So we'll provide a corrected memo, so you have those numbers. So in thinking about those numbers and what they represent, I just wanted to highlight a few things for you all. We, we have two main areas of focus in what we incentivize, energy efficiency projects and electrification projects. Electrification, our focus on electrification this year has resulted in funding for sixty heat pump installations throughout our whole territory. So that represents continued growth and success that we've had in that area over the last several years in incentivizing and being able to advise people on decision-making around a heat pump for their home and connecting them with contractors to perform that kind of installation. And what that really helps us drive, and I'll show an example in the next slide, is an increase in the emissions reductions of the projects that we fund. So that is one, of course, strategic goals in alignment with the county's climate action plan is that we drive emissions reductions in the built environment. So the projects that we've done so far this year will result in emissions reduction estimate of 3,700 metric tons of carbon over the lifetime of the, the project. And we expect that to go up as we, as we calculate throughout the year and, and the year in a great, a great place to further our goal of reducing 160,000 metric tons of carbon over the course of the next six years. And that focus on electrification is a big piece of what helps us achieve those numbers. The other piece I want to call out here relates to another one, of course, strategic goals. And that is that 42% of all of our incentives awarded so far in 2025 have gone to community priority participants. So this is a program that supports income-qualified participants and essential workforce like nonprofit staff, teachers, nurses, a few other categories in awarding double rebates. So we have our standard rebate program, and then we have a double rebate program for these priority participants, which aligns with both the county's climate action plan goal of making sure that these solutions are accessible for, for everyone in the community and Core's strategic goal of awarding a minimum of 40% of our incentives to these, this category. And then moving on to this next slide. So this is, this is kind of the example that I talked about of where our continued focus on electrification is resulting in projects that deliver more metric tons of carbon savings year over year. So in Q2 2024, the projects that we funded delivered around 750 metric tons of emissions reductions over the lifetime of their, of the project. In the same quarter, 2025, that went up by about 500. So some of that is representative of just the number of projects that we did in, in Q2 between those two years. But some of that is also this strategic focus on electrification and how far the dollars go in terms of reducing energy emissions. So tied to that, we have a target. It's a rough target because we, as we learn more and the market develops in terms of the cost of these projects, that target looks different for residential and commercial buildings. But our, our general target is $1,500 per metric ton of emissions reductions for the, the incentive that Core puts into, to a project. So that's what we aim for. We don't always get there, but. Questions so far?
Good. Thank you.
Drilling down further then on that community priority participant program, this slide just highlights again throughout Pickin County, unincorporated, and those communities that are within Pickin County. We've issued eighteen of those double rebates to community priority participants. And yeah, we see, we see continued interest and engagement in, in this program. So this is our second year of running it, and we intend to continue and hopefully build on that 40% that we put back into the community for these folks. Something that is on the horizon and that we've been discussing with Pickin County staff coming in, in 2026 is a program similar to the, the program that we run with Eagle County, Re-Energize Eagle County. We run that this year in coordination with Northwest COG. And that is targeted at income-qualified participants and reduces some of the barriers that we see for these participants in, in engaging with our incentive program because we provide a lot of the, the cost upfront. So it reduces the out-of-pocket cost for the customer in contracting with Northwest COG. They're also able to provide full-service support through a single point of contact for the customer. They can provide an energy assessment in-house, and they can also do the work on building envelope and weatherization upgrades that are recommended as well as electrification, so they can install heat pumps. And, and I'm a participant in this program this year and have gotten benefited from some insulation and hopefully a heat pump eventually. So very excited about, about where this opportunity might go. We're also exploring some other contractors who can provide similar service just to be able to increase capacity and diversify options for customers. So we've got a couple lined up, and we've been, again, talking with the staff about some potential neighborhoods where we might pilot a program for, for Pickin County in 2026. But more to come on that.
Can I? So you're working with the weatherization program at COG?
We, it is outside of the weatherization program. That program, I believe, has an income threshold or income qualification threshold of 80%.
That's been the problem in the past. That's why I'm asking. I've been part of COG for twenty-something years, so. And that's been why we haven't had a lot of service provided in Pickin County was because of the income issue. One of the reasons, did you guys have anything to do with the electrification or the, I think it was more weatherization at the trailer court there in Dotser, no, not Dotsero, but in, is it Dotsero?
I think it, I think it's Dotsero that you're referencing, the mobile home park.
Across from their new tiny house community.
Yes, and that was a few years ago, and I believe that we were involved. I don't know that much about it myself.
Great project. It was great. It was received really well. Almost burned in a recent fire that burned right up to, actually melted the fence of one of the units there. Started off the highway. Yeah, so, and now COG has their new office in Gypsum, which is a pretty amazing facility with some great opportunities. So please, Jeffrey is my backup to COG, so please let us know what we can do to help. Because we're at every meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And just to clarify, for the re-energized program and what we would, you know, we're open to other income bracket targets, but what re-energized targets is the 80% AMI to 150% AMI income bracket. And so anyone under 150% AMI can qualify for re-energized. And then if they're in the 80% or below, they can qualify for the weatherization assistance program.
And I know COG's really closely watching what's happening at the state level.
Yep.
For funding that's being cut, passed down from either the feds or directly from the state. So if I hear more that you don't know, I'll let you know and vice versa.
That sounds great. Appreciate it. Any other questions here? The next slides are just some, some quick highlights of projects that we've worked on this year. And I bring this project up because I think it illustrates an important consideration for thinking about our work on commercial and multifamily building projects in that they can take a long time and that the design and planning phase is somewhere that we want to be involved. So this is a project where we ordered a rebate for an engineering study at the Little Nell. And they are, they worked with a contractor out of Crested Butte to identify energy-saving measures that might be incorporated into their 2027 remodel. They are planning to incorporate some of them, and we are working with them on an ongoing basis to encourage them to consider adding more or consider what a next step to that remodel looks like. Because, again, this, this is a long process, and we know that being able to influence decision-making earlier in the planning process and in working with those commercial and large multifamily buildings especially is very important. So I think that this illustrates the need for Core to be able to provide continuity, both in terms of program delivery and in terms of funding. And I think that our, our efforts in fundraising speak to that. And I'm excited to share some updates about our staff and the expertise that we've brought onboard to help, help facilitate that continuity of program delivery.
I didn't know that Little Nell was planned. It seems like they just rebottled. But they're timing it when the airport is closed.
That may be strategic.
There's a few of them that we know of.
Yeah, so everybody prepared to be really busy during that nine months when everybody thinks we're going to be really quiet.
We're going to be doing a lot of construction.
Thanks. I didn't know that, though.
Yeah, yeah, we're excited about that one. And this other project is totally different. This is a residential, new construction. It's actually a rebuild after a fire where we provided a rebate to support this homeowner in, in going all-electric with his home. So that's, you know, encouraged and in many ways required by code. But this, we have found that providing a rebate for new construction to fully electrify goes a long way towards helping them consider ways that they can go bigger and revisit energy-saving measures in the future.
I didn't know you'd done that. That's awesome.
I know. That's a great use of money. That's great, great to hear.
Thank you. Thank you. Happy to share. Any questions about what I've shared so far in the program numbers? I'm kind of going to switch gears and talk about staff and other things.
Jeffrey?
Back to the 2027 conversation. Are there any other buildings we should actively think, like these are the, these are the least green buildings we have in Aspen? Can we, is there something on our proactive list as opposed to Little Nell coming to us and saying, hey, 2027, airport's closed, we're going to remodel? Is there anything on the low-hanging fruit list that we should proactively seek out to update and upgrade between Core and Pitkin? Could we push an offender?
I think there's a couple opportunities.
I think they're probably in the city, not the county.
Yeah.
And we, we are being proactive about, about those opportunities with the city in seeking out through the benchmarking program and our work on that, opportunities for interventions ahead of, you know, when they might be looking to set a performance standard, for example. But interesting, just wanted to make this connection for staff. For you, Michael, in talking about the opportunity with the Pickin County buildings and the energy performance contracting fits with this slide very well because I want to talk about the expertise that we've brought on staff. And Lee Mackey in particular has worked with Iconergy for ten years as a energy performance contracting officer. I'm not sure exactly what the title is, but. And we've also partnered with, I'm quite sure that they're one of the fifteen firms on that list to provide service in, in Aspen. So if there's anything that we can do to support you all in evaluating or implementing, and if there's a, a solution where there's a, an energy performance contractor and information that Core can provide as far as the benchmarking work that we've done on county buildings, we know that that's, that's the type of information that they use in putting together that audit, so happy to help. And then I'll expand just a little more on this slide. So the summary is that we've hired three engineers into Core, and we're very excited about them and the technical support that they can provide throughout the community. Julia Wilson is here today. She's our new energy concierge, has a background in electrical engineering and a long career with a variety of experience that brings great value to our customers and thinking about how we deliver our programs. Both Opek Bruhies and Lee Mackey joined as project managers with engineering backgrounds. And then we also brought on Gina McCracken as our Director of Regional Strategy, who is going to support us in bringing Pitkin, Garfield, and Eagle County communities together around opportunities where collaboration can help increase our collective impact. And her main focus right now is on delivering on our increase our collective impact. And her main focus right now is on delivering on our code adoption and enforcement grant from the Colorado Energy Office and helping these communities adopt energy code measures that will move them towards the net zero, net zero building code that we established in two thousand and twenty-four as a, as a cohort. And then lastly, Tim Johns up here on the screen has been with Core for almost three years now and is just continuing to grow and advance in his role and is tested and certified now as an energy manager in training. So he's just building, building those skills and has another year or two to become a certified energy manager. So I just want to highlight this for you as to show the experience and and expertise that we're bringing into Core and also to attribute the work and the numbers that I am able to share with you today to the talented staff and the great work that they've done this year.
I've never heard of environmental sociology.
You'll have to talk with Gina about it, and I'm sure she will be enlightening.
I'm, I'm like, that's a new one.
Yeah, I, I check out her profile. I'll introduce you to her. She'll have a lot to say.
Pretty interesting. I'm intrigued.
I'm going to skip Coal Basin for just a moment because I think I'm a little out of order in that I want to highlight our, our work on fundraising this year and over the last few years. And again, this, this comes back to our staff and our Associate Director of Development, Brittany Leclerc, and our staff support from Caitlin Mayer, in that they have made incredible progress in two thousand and twenty-five on far exceeding our budgeted goals for fundraising. So if you look at the columns for two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five budget, you can see that our actual two thousand and twenty-five column, the first one there, we're exceeding those, those numbers by a good margin in all categories, and particularly in the grants and foundations category, which is a large part of that is made up with a seven hundred thousand dollar grant that we received for the Coal Basin project for the Clean Air Program. So that one is pending permit, but we have received it. And overall, we are very pleased with what this presents for us in terms of opportunity to, again, be flexible in how we apply, apply our funding and throughout our territory and what we can do to multiply the counties and other communities' contributions to Core and the way that this, this helps insulate us from potential other funding impacts at the state and federal level. So this is our progress to date on, on our fundraising. Are there any questions here before I dive into Coal Basin? Backwards to Coal Basin. So again, one of our big updates this year is that we were awarded that seven hundred thousand dollar clean energy program grant, or clean air program grant, excuse me, and that is contingent on being awarded a permit from the United States Forest Service. So last September, we submitted our final proposal to the White River and have gone through a round of edits with them, submitted a edited and enhanced version in the early spring this year, and we are awaiting word from the White River. We have not had our application accepted for review at this point, and we don't have a timeline. We're working in the meantime to share the concept and the process because there's a lot of potential applicability, whether it's on public lands in other communities or if you want to be like Chris Caskie and buy an abandoned coal mine and install a regenerative thermal oxidizer, you can do that. But we want to share the concept and the process. And so we're, we're presenting at Mountain Towns two thousand and thirty in Breckenridge in October and looking forward to some good conversation there. And what we're seeking from you all now is, is maybe some direction and potentially understanding of if, if there is a way that the county can support us in encouraging the White River National Forest to accept our project for review. We, that's the point that we're at right now, and that's, that's what our holdup is. So just looking to you for thoughts and advice on if there is any role that you might have to play.
Well, sure. I mean, they have the potential to deny it for review?
They have the potential to deny it for review. I, yes, they, they, at this point, they would basically tell us that the application is incomplete or or that they need more information because we've been through that round of edits. I don't think that's where they're at. But if they otherwise find that it doesn't fit into their plan or their goals, that they could also deny it for that reason is my understanding. And then the review process would entail the entire NEPA process and evaluation. So we're just hoping to get to that point.
Sure. I think we submit a letter of support. We've been supportive all along. If you guys want to send us a draft, something to send along.
That would be much appreciated.
We have a meeting coming up with them, too, to introduce the new Forest Service Supervisor, Free Force Manager.
Yeah, we're happy to put that together and and send it over for your review and would appreciate your support in trying to help us move this forward because, as Michael highlighted in that pie chart, the fugitive emissions at Coal Basin are are a big portion of the emissions, and we have been at this now since two thousand and twenty-one. So it's, it's a longer-term project, and we're proposing that a system be installed there for up to twenty years. So we're not in a rush, but we would love to use that seven hundred thousand dollar grant towards implementation.
We're meeting with the new director at two thirty in two weeks on Wednesday.
Yeah, that's what I just said. Meeting with them coming up.
We will get something over to you very quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I believe that that concludes our update on two thousand and twenty-five, and and I'll present here our funding request for two thousand and twenty-six, or a proposed funding request, in that this-
Can I ask just one question quick? Because you highlighted the heat pumps in the incentives. Is that the biggest chunk of incentives that people are taking advantage of?
It's the biggest chunk, yes. And we are looking at including a breakdown of all the different project types in our next quarterly report. So you'll be able to see in addition to heat pumps and heat pump, hot water heaters. So heat pumps for space and and water heating, in addition to that, the rest of the projects, which I think the total number is a hundred and sixty-four, so sixty heat pumps out of a hundred and twenty-four total projects. The rest of them are things like insulation and air ceiling upgrades, induction ranges, control system, commercial kitchen projects, all sorts of different things. But those are all smaller categories and, again, kind of vary in the, both the total emissions reduction potential and in that target of dollars per metric ton of carbon reduced. So we, we have placed an emphasis on electrification and heat pumps because of the emissions numbers that that gives us, but they're also fairly expensive.
Yeah, what's the savings someone's getting?
The savings that someone's getting in terms of their energy bills.
Through, no, through your rebate.
Through our rebate are the, the standard Core rebate, seventy-five hundred dollars, up to fifty percent of the project cost for a, say, three thousand square foot home, switching to a heat pump system. That probably represents twenty-five percent of the cost. And then we stack that with whatever utility rebates are available and are looking to find other sources of either funding or financing for participants to help make it happen.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, two thousand and twenty-six?
Two thousand and twenty-six. So this is where we're hoping to go next year, in addition to all of the things that I've talked about from, from our incentive program and and the potential to add a, a re-energize-esque program that would all be delivered under this building performance hub services category. So energy assessments, grants, rebates, all of that included in that category. And approximately nine percent administrative overhead cost and additional funding to support community engagement to help us develop and bring in these new leads and create this pipeline of projects, and then seek those additional funding sources to multiply the county's contribution to to our work. And this overall funding request of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars represents approximately five percent increase over two thousand and twenty-four to account for inflation and expansion of our programs. So with that, I conclude my presentation, and thank you for your continued support and invite any questions that you might have about two thousand and twenty-five or two thousand and twenty-six or other, other work that Core does.
Connie? So that's an increase of about forty-two thousand dollars over last twenty-six, and that'll come back to us during our budget process?
And I'll just clarify because there's some changes to the budget process. We're going to come and do an overview of RAMP on September sixteenth to get clear, direction from the board of what to include, and that Connie will include that in the budget. That is the whole budget as part of the October fourteenth presentation.
So we won't expect to see a similar walkthrough from today when we review the budget later in the fall?
But we will include this number as part of that RAMP discussion to get direction from the board.
Okay. So they're still going to be requesting, no, they're still going to be requesting an additional forty-two thousand dollars over last year's budget. Yeah, okay, just, I'm, I'm talking about the numbers, not so much the process. I know it comes back in the two thousand and twenty-six budget at some point along the way. But Kelly told me I can take the budget off this year because I've done it so many years. I don't-
I said Patty should plan her vacation during budget.
For like months.
Maybe, maybe, maybe the day that we talk about new FTEs. Maybe not.
Can't seem to get out of Dodge. I'm trying.
Twenty-three years of budget.
I know.
All right, Francie?
Well, I would just say my usual thing that John's been hearing me say for years now. I would love to see Core and Clear work together.
We tried that many years ago. It did not work well.
I'm aware.
So, so I will share-
Come on up. I can't see you hiding in the corner back there.
I did say the same thing to Claire recently.
See, we haven't had this conversation in a while.
Red light on.
Yeah. Red light on, okay. John Doherty, CEO at Core for a little bit more time. And what I would say about that, that Tara did a nice job highlighting, when you look at the multiplier effect of what we've been able to do with our unrestricted dollars, a good number of those projects, the distinction between Core and Clear is that Clear is able to do a lot of outreach and education, informing people about what to do, but they don't have the dollars to do the incentives and rebates. So a lot of the dollars that are unrestricted, we're working with either Holy Cross or them. So their staff and our staff work very closely together at that staff level. Certainly is still and always will be an active conversation, I feel like. But the, the good thing is, you know, we have, we have expended a significant amount of money into Garfield County with unrestricted dollars in partnership with Holy Cross, and that those projects have largely been informed either by Holy Cross doing outreach to their folks or from Clear staff who are saying, hey, we have a really cool opportunity. It has a good return. Can you guys take it from here with the funding side of the equation? So-
That's great.
We're working at it. We're working at it.
And I like hearing that because in, this was many years ago, the effort, where it got snagged was that Clear wanted our rent monies just to go to them. And we were not comfortable with that because they're really raised in Pitt King County. So I'm glad to hear that you've worked out some projects that are worthy and you have found an ability to fund them because, again, energy issues and climate issues don't know the boundaries like political and dollar issues sometimes do.
Yeah, and I would just call out and acknowledge that Atlantic Aviation has been a big incentive maker for us to be able to do that. So their contribution with the match has been a lot of what has been able to enable, for us to go out from the philanthropic side and encourage people to give unrestricted dollars, non-REMP dollars, to move things forward. So kudos to however that was done. It's appreciated. It's been a huge motivator, and and it really helped Core be able to make the case to folks about, you know, we're trying every angle we can. I, I was really pleased to see the numbers that Tara shared in terms of how fundraising is working because every time I've been in front of you over the last four or five years in different forms and fashions, that has always been the question is, what are we doing to, to subsidize or supplement what is happening with RAMP and where things may go? And I think they've done an amazing job, and the board has been doing a really amazing job to support that.
Yeah, it was a great report. It was really good news, and I'm really glad to hear that you guys are working that closely with Clear.
And Walking Mountains. So our project over there, so just part of Gina, who was highlighted there, used to be the Climate Action Collaborative Director for Walking Mountains for Eagle County Communities. So she has come over here. She still lives there, goes back and forth. But the cool thing about that is that has helped us. Lee Mackey also lives in Eagle County, and so that has helped us to be able to take on commercial projects because that was a capacity area that was missing for them. So Core is actually doing, part of our funding this year from Eagle County is to step into the commercial space for Eagle County where Walking Mountains isn't doing that. But that has been a dual branded promotion and community outreach under both Core and Walking Mountains. So all of that ties into that, you know, scope and scale of how do we get economies of scale through all three counties and their, their respective communities driving more work together.
In our part of Eagle County or anywhere in Eagle?
Anywhere in Eagle on the commercial side. Our part of Eagle County, our, the valley's part of Eagle County, this side of the hill is where we focus a lot. But Basalt actually gives us dedicated dollars themselves on top of Eagle County around certain projects as well. So we have both of those, and and those we still focus on residential and some of the re-energize work that we do on this side.
That's great.
Yeah.
Jeffrey?
So John, if you reflect over the last four or five years, and Tara and Michael, any major changes, any shifts, like more nat gas clients, more propane clients, like anything technology, just see, say, here's the big takeaway, here's the shift that we're seeing, where people, five years in, are finally saying, I get it. It's a healthier home, you know?
I think we're moving in that direction in that the, when we look at the numbers of heat pump projects, simply that we've done over the last few years and the people that we talked to and their interest and curiosity in exploring electrification as an option. I think that the, the information is getting out there from Core and then a lot of other sources that, you know, gas in your home impacts your indoor air quality and that in, in some ways, when we have wildfire smoke in the area, that we can highlight the, the, the advantages of having a heat pump system that can also provide cooling because you can't open the, the windows in your home. And those are, you know, related to and impacted by climate change. And so I think that we are maybe moving from a sort of early adopter phase into this next phase in that people, we have more examples of projects that have been successful that we're able to highlight, and that goes a long way with this, this group of people. So, yeah.
Thank you. I think it captures it well. I think you're right. I think the early, you know, we're beyond the early adopters at this point. So it's, it'd be interesting to see what the next early adopters are, technology or elsewhere.
Yeah, yeah. We are actively always trying to evaluate and and ask our customers, how did you get engaged? What, what interests you in this? What are your reasons for doing this project and seeking Core funding and support for it? And trying to learn from that and how we do further targeted outreach in the future and how we reach more people.
Who is on the board now?
We have nine board members at this point. Tessa Shrinor is our Board Chair, and we have, so with the change last year to remove the requirement of, of having elected officials on our board, we had several members roll off. And we brought on a few new members. That's Chris Mangus and Mary Fox and Grace Fox, and, who's there other? Katie Casetta from the Aspen Institute. And then some of the other board members that have been with us for a while that'll roll off this year are Bob Circus and Katie Shore. And who am I missing? Elise, Elise Hoddle is also still on our board. And Chris Bilby from Holy Cross.
Thank you. Good, good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have just one last slide inviting you all to please attend our Green Expo at the Limelight here in Aspen on September twelfth in the afternoon. We'll have panel discussion, both at the local level and and talking about what's going on kind of globally as far as climate action and just to- as far as climate action, and just a great social hour and way to exhibit energy efficiency and electrification technology. So please join us if you're able.
Wait, wait, leave that up there. I, I'm paper school girl.
I might go see the
That's the twelfth, that's a Friday?
That is Friday, the twelfth from one to five PM as the demo and panelists.
Calendar top two burn.
Jeffrey, to answer your question, my answer would also be coordination and collaboration. Everyone is saying the same thing. So we are able, you know, Michael's giving us a clear picture of the twenty fifty plan and, and we're able to look at what the Climate Action Collaborative and what GCE is trying to do, and we're able to use the same language. And, and so we're seeing people like this Green Expo is a great example, we're seeing SkiCo step up in a different way. Chris Miller is, is advocating for helping us get the space to do the event to minimize cost. And at the same time, he's chairing the group to bring the panel discussion together of thought leaders around how are communities all over the country and around the world talking about this. So he's gonna be an active participant in that. And then we'll kick off, building off of the AIMF event a couple of years ago, with community leaders from the three counties talking about how are our efforts aligned so that we can continue to reinforce that message of if we can do this together and we can get our plans aligned and our codes aligned, it's gonna make it easier for contractors, architects, everybody to do this work more efficiently. And that seems to be really taking hold, and I attribute a lot of that to Gina McCracken and what she did at the Climate Action Collaborative in starting the Regional Climate Solutions Group, which Core now leads for the region under, under Gina, but it's, it's really powerful. We have, I think, about fifty-three people from the three counties participating in all walks, you know, whether it's elected officials, staff, or contractors, code people, Northwest COG, Colorado Energy Office are all at those meetings, and, and if you ever wanna see someone run a type meeting, go to a Gina meeting.
Can, can you send us on that flyer?
And I also wanted to share, if there's any public listening, that this is open to the public, registration is required because our space is limited. But please, anyone, attend, and we will send you the flyer.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then we should notice it.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Okay. We are in our admin portion of the meeting here with a review of our future agendas. Patty, you look like you have something.
I do. Did we notice, I don't know if we did the Democratic Party Dinner, I don't know how many of us might be going.
Which thing?
Democratic Party Dinner. It says time TBD. I still haven't received anything.
We have time and location are still TBD, but it is noticed for the twenty-seventh, so if you all here, we can update that on the agenda for next week.
Yes, I think it's at five at Too Lazy Seven.
I have gotten no, nothing from them.
Yeah, and I've checked everything trash, but, yeah. Okay, that's one thing. The other one, and I apologize, I sent something on to Sam. I'm hoping, I haven't heard back, I don't know if she, I don't know who I'm supposed to contact when I'm finding discrepancies in the general, in the future agendas. So I might, maybe I should have contacted Jeanette, but I'm gonna just say it now because I was trying to resolve it before. Here, on the regular meeting on the twenty-seventh next week, we have duplicate items. Items number seven and eleven are the same item, so we can eliminate one of the other. And there was a spelling error in item number seventeen as far as the word lease, just to clean it up, so it's correct title.
I think it is Sam, right?
Yeah, and if we can Yeah, I, we do both of them, but.
Okay. And then on Tuesday, the thirtieth of September, Leslie has scheduled the Emma Farms issue during the ACR meeting.
So what?
And it's okay, because I don't know, she, there was no executive session, so somebody saw there was a slot and put it in there. But it's the last Tuesday of the month, so I talked with Leslie and if there's, just go ahead and do it, Leslie and I already talked. It's not their annual review, it's an update on another issue, so. But again, I gave Sam all of the ACR meeting dates, so.
Right, maybe that was my miscommunication, because I thought what we talked last week, you said just go ahead and schedule a work session.
That was for
We don't ordinarily have it.
That was for the night, that was for the meeting, we were going up the mountain.
Right.
So maybe just got, begot, begot mixed, but just go ahead and leave it on there, but I just want to let you know, if I'm there, I'm late, if I'm not there, it's because I'm still at ACR.
I just have a question.
Yes, Francie.
Is anybody else going to the Wilderness Workshop presentation you're gonna go? It's on Thursday at five thirty, there's a presentation preceded by a reception by Stacy, Tracy Stone Manning, she's President of the Wilderness Society, the Director of the BLM. She's coming to talk on the future of public lands, and I don't know if everybody was invited, or just people who have been really involved with wilderness. But anyway, I'm going, so I don't know if we need to notice it, and you're gonna go?
I am not going, I will be.
We should be, okay, Greg's out of town.
And Kelly and Greg's still out of town?
And then we have the Takah, is that this Sunday or later?
What's Takah?
The, this, the cul-de-sac?
The transportation thing. I think it's Monday, I thought, the twenty-fifth.
It's a transportation thing? I'm at east of Aspen, you wanna go, switch?
It is the twenty-fifth, on Monday, the twenty-fifth.
That's next Monday.
And I am planning to go to that, anybody else?
What is it?
You don't know what it is? It's actually sponsored by Takah, and it's a presentation by this thing called cul-de-sac, which is a carless community in, I could look it up, but somewhere. And so it's, you know, it's a whole lot of information about how to reduce traffic congestion and stuff, and it's at well, I have it on five fifteen, but actually I remember Greg saying, oh, I thought it was at some other time.
I don't remember.
Do you have information?
Well, I just went to the website, it looks like it's at seven o'clock on Monday.
Okay, seven, that's way better.
We can send this out to
Maybe they should do a study when the city plan
We can show this out with all the board members.
Had to build a parking lot.
There's not that many cars over there, though, I was just there today.
They used to be parked up the highway, they used to be parked.
Is it free, and do we have to register?
It is free with an RSVP. So we can look at noticing if we need to.
RSVP here.
Did you, anything else, Francie?
No, I don't think so, I think I'm good.
Kara, do you have anything?
I do not have anything for future agendas.
I am wondering, we have some meetings scheduled for the ninth, Roaring Fork Safe Passages. What's, is this just an update? Is it further presentation of their data plan? Is it a request for money?
I am unaware, we can get that information.
Oh, it's joint with Open Space and Trails?
We can follow up and get some clarity for all of you.
Okay, thank you, that'd be great.
I don't believe the Vulnerable User Road Protection Bill will come back in twenty-five, twenty-six. So given there's not a lot of funding, don't know why we're spending an hour on it.
Where?
What date are you on, sorry?
I'm on Roaring Fork Safe Passages, one of the funding sources would be, there was a Vulnerable User Road Protection Bill that I don't believe comes back in twenty twenty-six.
I don't know, we don't set the agendas for Open Space and Trails generally.
And I don't know if Roaring Fork Safe Passages has developed further funding strategies. The only, I mean, just, Jeffrey, the, the presentation, we've received, I think, one presentation from them in the past that talked about, maybe two, that looked at sort of their data collection efforts up and down the valley of like where, you know, most of the conflicts are being caused, and then presented some best practice strategies and some briefcase studies, and that was, I think, the limit of what we've ever heard from them, right? So we haven't engaged with them on any kind of strategic planning or fundraising or anything like that.
And I think the reason is probably coming in at Open Space and Trails is because some of their sites may involve open space property.
We'll find out. I did want to, so just Kara, we talked, we mentioned very briefly at the end of our last prep meeting on Wednesday, perhaps finding an hour to schedule, talking about schedules. Schedule a discussion about schedules, because there's a number of potential travel opportunities for the board to go back to Washington in the fall, and as well as potentially visit some terminals with the terminal design team. And so I thought it made sense to just carve out and then figure out our follow-up retreat with Vision Twenty-Fifty and, you know, we're gonna be, I, I think we should do it quickly, so if we need to carve out or clean out schedules. So I think it'd be great if we can find some time, maybe on the second, since that looks like a very light meeting date right now.
Do we know who's on the airport advisory, the Terminal Advisory Board? I haven't seen the list of names that somebody selected, we never got to see who applied or anything.
I, I believe the process is that the co-chairs of each of the task force were looking through those lists, and then that process is going I believe to go through the AAB and to the board.
And then come to us, because I've had people call me saying, I wanna be on it, what's the process? And I, that's the process we did for the visioning committees and all that, so.
But we can have
So it hasn't been technically selected yet.
Any further, oh, do we have prep time built in for City of Aspen?
Yeah. When is our City of Aspen meeting?
The fifteenth.
The fifteenth. Didn't we just meet with them?
It seems, but that was in June.
So what do we have to talk about now?
I don't see prep time, did I miss it?
Yeah, it's on there.
Is it before the fifteenth?
Oh, no, we're gonna do it after, just to be on the safe side.
Anyway, I'll
It's coming up quickly.
Oh, here we go, yeah, the second, okay, it is on the second, great. We all got a request, oh, can we go to open discussion? If you don't have anything, why don't you go ahead first and then I'll go?
I've got a couple of items. You moved quicker than I was ready to click on.
Oh, well, we're not in a rush, I think, but we we're on time.
I don't, I don't have it, you have some, well, she's trying to
I would love to hear from Kara on Thomasville.
On the frying pan?
Yeah, Thomasville Lime, Lime Kilns.
Yes.
Well, she's trying to
I was just giving her part of the
I know, she's concentrating on pulling it up, I don't wanna distract her.
So, a quick background, when we, when staff was at the frying pan caucus with a few of the commissioners, there's questions about the status of the Lime Kiln project. And so I did get clarifications that we submitted the application for local designation because we have to do that before we can get the funding request. That is still being reviewed, I think, within COMDEV. And then once that designation, then we will be looking at History Colorado grants, and we'll be coming, I believe Jody is anticipating that as some of the budget, the twenty twenty-six budget.
Is that in the amount that they were asking about at the meeting, is that what they were talking about?
There was
I'm assuming it was Melanie who asked.
No, it was another individual.
It was Lee.
Yeah, Kelly answered it well, essentially what you all have budgeted to date, which was the question, was to do that local historic designation, and then there will be matching dollars, and I think that's what you will see as part of a trying to do a grant application to History Colorado.
It sounds like Michael also responded regarding panel cameras, so the frying pan is covered. Michael forwarded, or followed up on that request. I think the other one was to introduce them to Angie Davlin, who actually lives in Rude Eye Shores regarding the Roaring Fork Wildfire Collaborative, and I think that number was passed on by Mavis to Lee.
I'm not quite sure what, what's happening right now, are we just doing a debrief of the
Updates from frying pan.
Okay.
They were all the related questions from the frying pan. I'm stalling for you.
Do you want more debrief from the, or you're, you're letting me go to the next items? Oh, thank you.
You have his permission.
So cut to a few updates or discussion points for all of you. A couple of weeks ago, when Levi and Michael came about CC4CA sponsorships, we also shared that Mountain Pact was requesting sponsorship for their twenty thirty conference. And we got some more information, Greg forwarded it to me while, as, as he was heading out on vacation to carry the request forward. So, Mountain Pact twenty thirty doesn't, sorry, not Mountain Pact. Well, Mountain Pact, they are requesting one to, sorry, I'm gonna take a step back because I just realized I confused the two, this is not Mountain twenty thirty, this is different for, this is Mountain Pact, which is I think some of you see these letters come across your template or your email for various sign-ons to federal delegation, they're really focused on public lands engagement across the West and mountain communities. So they are requesting one to five thousand dollar sponsorship in support of their efforts. We currently, in lieu of kind of a membership model, that's what they're asking for. We don't have budget, or we don't budget for Mountain Pact like we do for other membership organizations. So the question is for the board, if you wanted to consider a sponsorship for Mountain Pact, anywhere from the one to five thousand dollar level.
If I knew what it was, I might wanna consider it.
The emails come from, I think it's Anna Peterson.
It is.
If I knew what it was, I might wanna sponsor, so if you could send me some
We can forward this along and we can bring it back next week.
I think Greg's been probably the most active in terms of Mountain Pact, he's quoted probably on their homepage regarding public lands. And they've been, the latest emails are pretty comprehensive regarding all of the threats to public lands in the West. And so they've been pretty spot on in advocacy.
If she could send me some information that I can review then.
We'll, we'll share it up to the board. And I apologize, I actually had been under the confusion that I was talking to Mountain twenty thirty, I fell out for their sponsorship and see that it's a different one, so.
Did you ever connect with that guy about Mountain twenty thirty?
We, so in addition to Core presenting, we will be presenting our intensity studies to, as part of the twenty thirty conference.
That's great, I'm so glad.
And then the last request is, let me go back to this one, is coming from Lindsay Mase. She is asking, so quick background, Garfield County provides our child support services. And she's requesting the board give direction to send a thank you letter. So they were recognized as a distinguished performer from the state with a hundred percent timelinessness. I think that's how you say that word. And as they provide our child support services, wanting to know if the board would like to send a thank you letter to Garfield County. to Garfield County in recognition of their outstanding performance.
So she'll draft a letter for us?
I'm glad you brought up, because I was going to, I support sending them a thank you letter.
Okay. Okay.
I think, I think that's appropriate.
Do you all want us, we can have Lindsay draft it up and bring it back for you all to do?
That'd be great.
I think all five of us should sign it, I think that'd be great, if we all five, four.
I agree, I think that's a good idea.
If Greg's not here, he misses out on the signature line.
We'll just use his recorded-
Oh, electric, electronic.
Those are all my items, thank you for stalling and letting me catch up.
All right, others?
I have one quick, we got another letter about electrifying the landfill.
Electric fencing for the bears?
Mm-hmm. I'm not sure we, what to do.
From Melinda.
Yeah, the PhD doctor, Melinda, because I thought with our discussion with CPW, we, we're not really headed in that direction, we thought maybe just fencing compost, and I don't know what we're supposed to, to do.
Well, I didn't think that meeting really went anywhere about, because the CPW did not want to recommend to us what steps to take. And we didn't want to take steps without a CPW recommendation about what was the best thing to do. That's sort of the way, feeling I had about that meeting. And I, I told Melinda I would talk to her, I think that's her name, either Friday or Monday, she wanted to meet with me.
I thought there, we made a request for staff to coordinate with CPW on design of the future portions of the landfill, or identifying what opportunities there might be.
Such as just fencing compost.
Well, there was also discussion that, well, what are we fencing right now, because we're expanding the landfill, and it's kind of complicated right now? But she's suggesting that we, give me a second, do a study on how many, maybe her name's not Melinda, maybe I'll put in bears. How many bears would, are totally habituated to the landfill, so, how many bears are actually dependent on the landfill? Out of the thirty-six, fifty, how many bears live there? A lot. And she wanted some more specific information about how many are one hundred percent dependent on the landfill, I believe. And-
How, how would you-
Here it is, Melinda is her name.
Depends on the time of year.
I propose a pilot study to identify which, if any, bears are completely dependent on Picking County landfill, and to determine whether a gradual reduction in access to the landfill over time will encourage any such bears to transition to native foods. So I'm gonna meet with her on Thursday.
Or transition to the neighbors.
Okay, thanks Francie.
Well, maybe to the wilderness, I don't know, I mean, it's just her suggestion, so I'll talk to her.
Yeah, I'd like it.
Is she proposing to do the pilot study?
I might talk to Matt before I talk to her.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's an interesting study. I just wanted to know that somebody was addressing it, so we don't get another letter from somebody accusing us of not responding to our public, even though-
I responded to him, I said, "We talked about this, you'll know more on Monday," that's all I said.
I responded because he contacted us on Saturday morning, so, thank you.
Yeah, anyway.
Levi sent out a survey, I think, trying to figure out what our board priorities are for CCAT, so that he can submit the survey to CCAT as to what Picking County's priorities are.
Your CCAT?
Yeah, I mean, I, it's tough, because we haven't really discussed any of these, so we're ju, but, anyway, you're encouraged to complete that, to help streamline.
I just wrote it down on my list of things to do, which is growing over here.
And then I just, I wanted to just report out to you guys, John Swordout called me, he used to be the director of CCI.
Yeah.
And I like John a lot, and respect him, and he wanted to talk to me about wolves, and I was like, "I'm probably the least prepared person to talk to you about wolves on the county commissioner." He has been hired to do some, I think, facilitation with the property owners, like, between property owners and CPW and Cattlemen's Association, I don't know exactly who's paying him.
So Western slope entities that are being impacted?
From, yeah, from Grand, all the way through on the Western slope. And, you know, his real commitment is, he's like, "I don't want the wolf introduction process to undermine ongoing commitment to conservation by the ranching community." Is, he's like, "I've worked on conservation my entire life, you know, they're an important partner," and, and he just, you know, he elevated some concerns. The thing that he brought to my attention, because I said, you know, "We've talked about this, we've heard from a number of people," like, Picking County is not the real stakeholder convenor in this matter, like, it's, you know, it's not really within our wheelhouse, and it's not really within our, you know, like, what we do necessarily. I'm like, of course, we've talked about it, and we're hearing about it, and these, you know, our past position was to not take a position on the introduction, and then we supported the development of the plan. So anyway, so what he told me was that there is the possibility that some legislation will be introduced in the interim session relative to pausing the reintroduction efforts. And I said, "Well, you know, we do take positions on bills, so that would be a thing that the county could do, and an appropriate action that is within our wheelhouse to do, if we so choose." You know, forward me along additional information. So I just wanted to give you all heads up, that I had that conversation, and there may or may not be an opportunity forthcoming to further discuss.
There's an article in the Denver Post today on the legislation.
Okay, I didn't see it online, so I don't know if it's just dropped.
And it's predicting that it probably won't pass, but it is bipartisan.
Well, it's introduced by all of our reps.
Dylan Roberts is, uh, uh, one of the introducers, what'd you say?
And John said, and Elizabeth Velasco, and Megan Lukens, and Mark Catlin had all intended to be sponsors of the bill.
So it's a request to pause the reintroduction, and to take that approximately five hundred thousand dollars, I think, and apply it towards education instead of the wolves, and I would not support a vote to support that.
Sure, I mean, I think we can have a more detailed conversation, the way that John had explained it to me is, you know, he said, what, hi, hi, his opinion about it was, what should have happened is all the programs and policies should have been in place before the reintroduction took place, and that was not the case, you know, they, they didn't have range riders in place, they didn't have the education relative to, um-
Right, well, it's because the voter language mandated a timeframe which didn't fit the need for time.
They didn't, the governor didn't want to wait to do a NEPA on federal lands, and so the only options were to plop them where people graze, so, so that was a little bit of what our conversation was, anyway, I wanted to-
Well, if you'd like to put off the conversation, I'll put off my response.
Oh, I don't, I mean, I don't know, I just, we don't have a piece of legislation to sort of respond to at this point, but, so that's sort of my, just my suggestion, is that until there is something for us to actually have a position on, and then consider if we want to weigh into that for a, that's the only reason for my suggestion for a delay, I'm happy to hear what you have to say.
No, I don't, I don't need to say anything today. I, I was telling Jeffrey this morning, I've been trying really hard not to have an opinion on this, because my opinion doesn't really matter until it comes to, when it does, you know?
That's why I was like, there's not really anything for us to do, and then now this is something that we are being requested to do.
Yeah, well, I, I think that the reintroduction is going on, we have thirty wolves on the ground right now, they're still looking for two in the Copper Creek pack. It's a pretty big country up there, and it's pretty hard to find them, because they're not colored, the ones they're looking for. And I, I think that for it to be successful, as we've said for the last few years, we have to reach a reasonable, reasonably sustaining number of wolves, which is around a hundred and fifty minimum, and so if we pause reintroduction, then we're reducing the possibility of forming packs by bringing in more wolves in December, I think it's December. And so we will have a diminished wolf population, which will decrease the potential of reaching a stable population and set us back quite a bit, two years maybe, so, that's what I read, was that it could be two years. Haven't discussed it with Ty, and I don't think they discussed it, they might have discussed it at the last meeting, but I haven't talked to him about it, so I don't really know what the board, the commissioners thought about it. I don't think they're in a position to be in favor of it, because Polis is definitely not in favor, I don't think he'd sign it. I think if it's passed, he'll veto it, so, it's, unfortunately, the wolf reintroduction thing has become his thing, his and Marvin's thing, and I think it has stripped some power from the commissioners and from the legislators, but, but ecologically speaking, and as from what I learned from being on the reintroduction stakeholders group, I think it would be detrimental to reaching a balanced population of wolves in the state.
Thanks Francie. All right, well, stay tuned, this wolf could definitely come back. And I think that's all I had for open discussion, is there anything further? Yes, Jeffrey?
So, I would put my name on the letter that John has drafted in support of the ranchers and the families that are affected by, you know, by the rollout to date, by the questionable practices of the state in terms of following their own plan, but really to support and stand with the ranching community in Snowmassing Capital.
So does he have a letter for us to sign?
I don't have a letter from him yet.
I don't think we have any legislation to write a letter about, so I think we should wait till we have something concrete in front of us to evaluate whether we want to support it or not, because we don't know what it's gonna say.
A CPW agent was stabbed yesterday.
Oh, my God.
In the abdomen, at some, like, that I didn't know the name of, or some area I didn't know the name of.
Awful.
And he's been operated on, and he's stable, and they're looking for the person who perpetrated this crime, and the people in the area have been told to go into their houses and lock their doors.
Where is this?
Let's see if I can find where it was.
I read some- And Jeffrey, I just, I want to reply, I, I respect your position, and you can sign anything as an individual, that's totally fine. I just encourage keeping in mind that we had a huge vote of support for the reintroduction in Picking County. That may, those numbers may have changed, those sentiments may have changed now, but when it was on the ballot, that was the kiss. All right, well, Francie, um-
She's looking up, I want to see where this-
Let me see if I can find where that was. Hopefully I don't have to use my password, you know, and everything.
Any other open discussion while we're waiting for Francie to figure that out?
Well, I have a question for Francie, but she's in deep right now, so.
I, I would like Kara to follow up on the Mountain Pact thing, I think the-
You would like what?
The Mountain Pact that we did discuss partially during Agenda, oh, sorry, you kicked off open discussion. I think it's an interesting organization that's doing good work in an, in an interesting time.
Well, I, you started this, yeah, with Greg was supporting or not supporting, and I don't know what Greg's supporting or not supporting, so.
It's worth taking a look at, and our involvement in the organization, I was probably skeptical when I came on board, and I've seen the work they've done over the last year, and I'm just saying, please take a look.
I think it came up in North Naco also, and I was supportive of them, but I, I don't know what Greg has said, because he didn't tell us clearly.
Yeah, Amy's gonna distribute to the board for more information, and then you can follow up and discuss next week.
Okay.
Okay, it's Staunton State Park.
Staunton.
Staunton, which is in the Pine Junction area.
From like, south of Denver, about north of Castle Rock.
Why didn't, well, I didn't get this.
It's Jeffco.
Kind of by Bay, or not Bay.
It's in Jeffco, and he's still on the loose, and people are still being told to hunker down.
Terrible.
Yeah.
So, one, one other thing I received, and Francie, it's my understanding that this transportation coalition, whatever you call it, that you're sitting on, is not going to be discussing at all the entrance to Aspen.
It's certainly not a primary point of discussion on which we're going to be making recommendations.
Well, Gary Louder presented a different, very well researched and engineered plan, I haven't really reviewed, he sent me a bunch of-
Who introduced it?
Gary Louder, and it's very well done, from the briefs, my brief look at it. And he wanted to know, he said he's been denied the opportunity to present it, and I don't know where he could or should take it, probably to the city.
Where did he, where did you see it?
He sent it to me.
Oh.
I met him at the fundraiser for Michael Bennett, and he took me aside and wanted to know if the county could help get his idea out there, and at first I thought, well, through the coalition, but they're not looking at the entrance.
He's an engineer?
No, but he's hired an engineer, he came up with a really good plan, it's very well done. From my brief, I haven't, like I said, it had a lot of attachments, so maybe I should just-
Who turned him down, George?
They wouldn't even let him come to the meeting and just talk.
John is usually more welcoming than George, but he might go to John, but I think you should go to Rachel.
I, yeah, I think the question that he had posed to me, that the city would have to answer, is whether the scope of, and I didn't see his design, but what he would like to see is, like, within the design possibilities of the current plan, like, if it's not so far off that they can include it in future amendments, or if it's like fundamentally adjusts what the record decision is.
And I think it's pretty, I think it's more on the fundamental side, but-
Or Pete, I would, he should go to the city.
Looking at it briefly, it solves a lot more problems than the current plan. Like, emergency access would actually be emergency access, coming and going, it, it, it would, yeah, it's, so I will, I'm not gonna contact Rachel, because she'll just say no.
Well, Pete, maybe.
Yeah, that's where I'll go, I'll send it on to Pete, and let, and let Mr. Louder know that I've done so, and if anybody else would like to see it.
I'd love it, I'd love to see it, and then I could talk to the people in the transportation.
I'll send it to Kara and have her send on the email.
Yeah, or some of what I always wonder about these things is, is it precluded in the future? You know, can you make improvements to, on the ground?
If they build the one they have now, you know, it would be, you would want to do it in concert with the existing plan, part of the existing plan, part of what's, what's already there. It's actually pretty interesting.
Oh, I'd love to look at it.
I'll send it, well, I'll send it to Kara and have her disseminate it to the board.
Okay, sounds good.
And, uh, Pete.
And then if Greg and I both have it, and we go to a meeting and we talk about it.
I'll do that, the city, I'll do that directly.
All right, I think we've reached the end of our agenda, and we will see you all next Tuesday.
Thank you.